So I will call the meeting to order of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Jeff Moore, David Rosacker, Chris Rupert, Jorge Sotolongo, Matt Tondo, Patrick Morris, Vice Chair, and I am Michael Page, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson, Recording Secretary. Our rules are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table right here in front of us. You're welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial. Therefore, they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case discussed during the hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. The case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remained on consent. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. Now, when I mention that, we have a little bit of a technical glitch here. So when you come down, if you have any materials to present to the Board, this projector isn't working on the podium, so you'll have to lay your materials on this small table right here. There's a projector that will project onto the screens here, but you'll have to come back to the podium then to give your testimony. Okay? So it's a small table, and then come back. It's kind of awkward, but it's going to have to work today. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will hear, will first hear from the applicant, and after the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are represented for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try and limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. We have a very full house here today. I know there's going to be a lot of testimony on a couple of agenda items. If you do have a spokesman, that'd be great. If you do plan to come up, if already, if the testimony's already been said that you want to say, you certainly are more than welcome to enter your testimony into the record, but we'd like to be brief if you can, if it's already been given, okay? Just because of the amount of people that are here. When given testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cellphones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board, members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they may, that they are made part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all the information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Opens Meeting Act can be found in the white binder in this room. There are no changes to the agenda that I'm aware of, so we'll just move through the agenda here. The first item I'm going to do is read the consent agenda items for approval.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question that pertains to the agenda regarding the hold over cases? What do those pertain to?
Those were previously presented at a previous meeting. They were held over at that meeting, and they're going to be here today. Okay?
Would you have been notified by mail if a holdover case pertained to your development?
Not if, not if it was on the agenda last month.
What if you were on the agenda, but it was canceled?
I'm going to have a staff member come speak to you, so we get some clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, because I don't want to.
All right. So now I'll move into the approval, consent agenda for approval. These items are on consent for approval. So if you want any of these items removed from the agenda, please raise your hand, if you would, and let us know that you want this removed, and we'll remove it, and it will be heard at the regular meeting. Okay? So the first item on consent for approval is case number four, item number four, agenda item number four, case C-724-197, C-725-099. Applicant is Pasquale Batista. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R6 district along with approval of a parking adjustment for a mixed-use development, which is laid over from our September 4th 24 meeting. The location is 2902 South 20th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? The next item is item number five, case number C-325-075. Applicant is the Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the disposition of city-owned property. The location of that property is 2250 Fort Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next item is item number six, case number C-325-076. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the disposition of city-owned property. The location of that, those properties are 3820 and 3816 North 36th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item number seven, case number C-325-077. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the disposition of city-owned property. Location of 2861 Ellison Avenue and 5625 North 29th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next item is item number eight, case number C-325-078. Applicant is Planning Department on the behalf of the City of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the disposition of city-owned property. Location of 2415 Florence Boulevard. Anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item nine, case number C-325-079. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the disposition of city-owned property. The location 2428 and 2430 Lake Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 10, case number C-325-080. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. On consent for approval. Request is approval of the disposition of city-owned property. The location of 4038 and 4034 Hartman Circle. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item number 11, case number C-325-081. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. On consent for approval. The request is approval of the disposition of city-owned property. Location of 4101, 4021, 4019, 4017, 3927, 3925 North 24th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Item number 14, case number C-325-085. Applicant is Girls Inc. of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. This is a, request is approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from office, commercial, and low-density residential to high-density residential. The location is north of Missouri Avenue and L Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 17, case number C-1225-089. Applicant is Airheart Griffin &amp; Associates. It's on consent for approval. The request is preliminary plat approval of the South Side Terrace III. A subdivision inside the city limits properly, property is located within an NCE overlay district. Location is southeast of 30th and T Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? All right. Next is item number 18, case number C-1099082, C-1225-091. Applicant is West Dendy Development Company LLC. The request is on consent for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of West Dodge Hills Replat IV. A minor plat inside city limits with approval of a major amendment to the Mixed Use Development Agreement for West Dodge Hills, along with the repeal of the ACI overlay for a portion of the site. The location is southwest of 180th Street and West Dodge Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 19, case number C-1025-092, C-1225-093. The applicant is Drew Snyder Real Estate LLC. It's on consent for approval. The request is preliminary approval of the perch, a minor plat inside the city limits along with approval of a waiver to Section 5384D Lot Frontage. The location is southwest of Skyline Drive and Bonanza Boulevard. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay. We will remove that from the consent for approval. There is also an item for layover as well that's going to come up for layover, so if you want that removed, please raise your hand. Put them both, we'll pull them both off together. Okay? So pull both of those off, item number 19. All right. Next is item number 20. The case number C-1025-070. Applicant is Holy Name Housing Corporation. It's on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from R535 to R5. Location is northeast of 40th and Blondo Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 21, case C-1025-071. Applicant is King's Table LLC. It's on consent for approval. Request is rezoning from R7 to R4, and the location is 3819 X Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 22, case number C-1025-073. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from R535 to R5. The location is 2861 Ellison Avenue and 5625 North 29th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? All right. Next is item 23, case C-1025-074. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It's on consent for approval, and the request is rezoning from R4 to R5. The location is 2415 Florence Boulevard. Anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 24, case C-1025-083, C-825-084. Applicant is Girls Inc. of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. This is, request is for rezoning from R7 and GC to R7 along with approval of the special use permit to allow recreational club in the R7 district and expansion of the MCC major commercial corridor overlay district. The location is north of Missouri Avenue and L Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 25, KC-1025-090. Applicant is Nick Dolphins. Consent, it's on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from R435 to R5. The location is 965 South 51st Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 26, case number C-1097114. The applicant is Woodsonia Applewood LLC. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of a major amendment to the Mixed Use Development Agreement for Pepperwood Village. The location 505 North 155th Plaza. Anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 27, case number C-1025-098. Applicant is Elkhorn School District. It's on consent for approval. Request is rezoning from DR to R4. Location is 1401 Veterans Drive. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 28, case number C-1123114. Applicant is Sage Capital Investments. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of major amendment to the PUR Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. The location is 1440 South 13th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? All right. Next is item 29, KC-1025-097. The applicant is West Rhodes Mall LLC. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. The location is 707 North 102nd, 102nd Street and 10000 California Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Next is item 30, case number C-717089. Applicant is Omaha Public Schools. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the DR district properties located within an ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. The location is 12200 Burke Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? You do? Okay, we'll remove item 30. Next is item 35, the applicant, or the case number is C-725-094. The applicant is City of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. The request is approval of the conditional use permit to allow surface parking in the NBD district. Location is 3926 Harney Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, that completes our agenda for, consent agenda for approvals. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve agenda items number four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 14, 17, 18, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 35.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, we record the vote, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yeah.
Tondo?
He's, yeah, he's absent, but he may return.
Sotolongo?
Yeah.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Okay. Those items for approval have been heard, and no further testimony will be given on that, so if you're here for one of those items that were on for approval, you're certainly welcome to stay, but you're free to leave as well. Thank you. Okay, next, we pulled item number 19, which is, I'm going to read the cases for layover next, which were on for layover, but we pulled case number 19, so that will be heard in public testimony here today. So there's only one, one item on for layover. That's case, or item number 32, is case number C-725-069. The applicant is Lan Hui. Sorry if I mispronounced that. The, the, it's on consent for layover. The request is approval of the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R2 district, and the location is 5113 Hartman Avenue. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay. So you know other items on here? Need a motion for the layover item?
Motion for layover, case 32. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, we record the vote, please.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
Okay. That item too, if you were here for that, you're certainly welcome to stay, but you're free to leave. No other further testimony will be heard on that item. Okay, that completes our consent agenda items. Now, we're going to, we're going to go back to the items that were pulled off of consent first, and then we'll get into the regular agenda items. And so the first item that was pulled off consent was item 19. There's actually two items on that for that case. 19 was case number C-1025-092 and C-1225-093, and the applicant is Drew Snyder Real Estate LLC. And the request is preliminary approval of the perch, a minor plat inside the city limits along with approval of the waiver to Section 5384D Lot Frontage. And the location is southwest of Skyline Drive and Bonanza Boulevard. And the other item that was reflective of that same property is case, same case number C, C9, or case number C-1025-092, C-1225-093. Same applicant, Drew Snyder Real Estate LLC. And the request for this one was final plat approval of the perch, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from R1 to DR and R2, and the location was southwest of Skyline Drive and Bonanza Boulevard. So may we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Bradley Hyke, 10836 Old Mill Road, Omaha 68154. Here on behalf of the applicant. We agreed with everything in the staff rec report. We understand that the final plat cannot move forward until the wetlands delineation is completed this spring, when weather allows, and we worked through a few of the other details. I just want to briefly explain the reason for the rezone request. The property is located on the western side of Skyline Drive, about a half mile south of West Dodge Road, and abuts the Elkhorn River. Project area is about 6.2 acres and consists of two parcels. Both parcels are currently zoned R1. One of the parcels is a platted lot with an existing home on it, and the other parcel is an unplatted lot, about 5.6 acres. The minimum lot requirement for R1 zoning is 100 feet of lot frontage. The unplatted parcel has a little over 90 feet of frontage, so to plat it in its current configuration, it could not meet its current zoning. Additionally, the existing house on the existed, existing platted lot, the prop, the house is, the house corner is on the property line, so that also does not meet its R1 interior side yard requirement. So we're proposing to rezon both parcels to R2 and then replat the lot line between the two parcels to meet the interior side yard of 10 feet for R2, and then also meet the minimum lot frontage of 80 feet for R2, excuse me, for the new parcel that will front Skyline Drive. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to speak? And please your name and address for the address.
My name is Bonnie Lees DeVries. I live at 21854 Hillendale Road in Elkhorn. I, I have not been to one of these before, so please feel free to direct me in the proper direction if I misspeak. First of all, I, we built a home at that address in 2012. By 2014, there were issues with instability of the foundation. It took us from 2014 and four engineering firms to figure out what the problems were. Everybody wanted to fix it, but you can't fix it if you don't know what's really wrong. And everybody has a plan, a lot of engineering firms have a plan, but they may not address the real issue or the real underlying issue and just create a fix for a short period of time. So we elected to figure out what was going on. While that was happening, in 2015, we had total trees behind our house, and by 2015, we started seeing the river. And then we saw more of the river, but there were still trees in front of us. And finally, one big chunk, like an island with four or five trees, started sinking, and it had separated from the bank. And it would go down the bank for two or three weeks, hit the shore, and then get washed away with the river. That happened time again and time again. And then there was this huge storm, and I went out to see what was going on, and two streams were coming out of the bank about five feet below. So, in, in other words, the bank was unstable, and what we finally figured out from one engineering firm who dealt with the bank and the house later, was that the house was built on glacial till. We bought the property, the city subdivided that lot and made it buildable by subdividing it and allowing them to put it on sale. We didn't know, you assume the lot is safe. But it wasn't in the fact that building on glacial till that we have now learned, there are three layers in that area. There's the dead trees and, and leaves that come down. Below that is the loess that blew in from the prairies, and below that is a glacial till. And the glacial till is the hardest layer. So any water that comes down a hill, and it does come down from two lots above, the Samuelson Residence at the corner, it's high, and it was coming down, and it was sipping, seeping down to the till layer, and what does it do? It takes the path of least resistance out to the river. And so these huge chunks of property with roots hanging out the end were going down the river. So in order to intercept that, we had to find out where was the water coming from. And the engineer decided, and it, there was obviously runoff with rain and, and whatever, but there was a pool and a septic system above us draining our way. So in order to stop this, we had to put in a huge French drain across the back of our property and through another property completely, and then a directional bore through the property that they want to develop now. And then, we, we, we had trouble then because all the trees had eroded the bank, and what happens is the rain comes in, and the flow still comes down there, and it erodes the bank. So we had some surface erosion, but far less, and no chunks going down. And so, we didn't want to deal with the house. We finally figured out later, it wasn't until something like 2023 or so, no, it was 2020 approximately, that I had a pipe burst that wasn't insulated to the outside wall. I had water in the basement. We pulled back the carpet, did directional bars, and found out that the foundation had not been properly compacted, and, and to density and water content, and the limestone layer wasn't there. And what we had was water coming down the hill under the house, following the glacial till, and then you're hitting fat clays, which don't swell, which do swell, and green clays that don't, and they were swelling and moving the house. But we didn't want to fix the house until we got the bank fixed. And so we went ahead, and we engineered a microfiber cover that we covered with plast, elastomeric material that expand and contract, so it would stay. We put a big French drain around the whole base, and it went down in, and, and, and the tile was down on it, but it was, it was preventing the water from going past it. It was six... It was six feet deep in some spots to do this. And then we secured it to the bank with 123-foot duckbill anchors. Sealed those panels and sealed the anchors, and we've had no further erosion. So then we said, okay, we'll fix the house.
Bonnie, can I, can I ask you to, to, to just talk about what, what you're concerned about with this particular project?
Well, I'm, what I'm concerned about is, the property we're on is the same as the property above us. There has been, this type of thing occurred to houses all the way down from Dodge clean to center. Houses are moving, property is being displaced, banks are falling, the river is coming towards us. It's moving south anyway, and it actually makes a turn right where this proposed place is. And so there are several things that, that are a problem with this. It's very expensive to do everything we did. It's very expensive to, to get engineers to sort it out. So the soil and bank erosion is a problem bordering the Alkhorn, Alkhorn River. And I know it's going to be a problem up there, just by virtue of problems on both sides. The second thing is, you're, you're gonna go in, if you're gonna make it R1 to R2, R2 you can densely build. We are concerned that this is going to become a subdivision. This is going to become a densely populated subdivision in a place that wouldn't be there, and everybody else is R1. It's almost impossible to build on the terrain. One of our group there went out there, and it is extremely steep. The cost of putting in different roads, the different road, the water drainage would be interrupted, the, the sides, trees would be removed, and you'd have erosion going down this huge ravine, which is right above us, the ravine that my pipe goes to, and gently takes water out to the river. And that ravine would even get eroded more, and then the bank is going to come back on it. And then you're gonna have a subdivision with houses that are gonna experience exactly what I experienced. And that's not really fair to the people who buy these houses. The second thing is, there have been no geotechnical, not civil engineering, no geotechnical evaluations done, soil engineers who understand soil, water, and what happens when they're mixed. And so, that really needs to be done. And the traffic flow is already terrible on Skyline, with all the building out west between Pacific and Center, and that traffic flow will get worse because people want to go down Dodge, and that's the main route to Dodge. And then there's a stop sign, Bonanza and Harney, that backs up traffic altogether. There, there, it's a three, uh, three-way stop sign, and the road that's proposed is right there, just around the corner, and if you try and get out in that spot, you can't even see the stop sign unless you take down a whole bunch of trees. That road, I'm speaking for people who live on the upper side of that road, they also are concerned because that road is right by a big ravine, which is draining some of the city water from above through. And if that ravine gets blocked or disturbed in any way, you're gonna change whole water drainage patterns, which is an issue. And lastly, sewer systems. Part of my problem was the septic system. The septic system with water flow down a hill, where are you gonna put the sewage? That property is extremely steep in spots, and the ravine is extremely steep. There are two ravines that come down around the current house and then go straight to the river. Those will be overloaded. And this is like 2025, I don't think anybody should have a septic system in an urban area if you can't. I was told the city won't allow them to pump out the sewage to the city system, so where is it gonna go? And as far as wetlands are concerned, we don't want any more water up there in a pond somewhere. It'll seep out, pools leak, those things, you know, they leak. Water, we're trying to get water off property. So, I, I, and fif, 14 out of the 15 members that are on Hillendale Road in Elkhorn want this, we oppose this, and to be honest, we, we, most of us oppose any development there for the reasons I've stated, even if there is a geotechnical engineering firm that looks at this. And the reason I say this is, just as there are good doctors and bad doctors, good lawyers and bad lawyers, there are good engineers and bad engineers. I had four of them before I could finally get an answer that made sense. And so I have had a, a problem. I was given a fix, so it's been diagnosed, it's been fixed, so theoretically, I should be cured, but I'm not. I'm in remission, okay? And this can come back and hurt my property, and hurt my neighbor's property, and hurt the properties above. And I think the city needs to understand the geology, the geography, the terrain, and the interaction of water, and how it's gonna affect the other people around. It's not just that plat, what about the people around it?
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to wrap here if you could.
I will.
We've got your point here, okay? Thank you.
Can other people speak?
Absolutely, if there's any other people who want to speak. But if it's, if it's, if it's new testimony, we appreciate new testimony, if it's repetitive testimony, just keep it brief, please. And name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Jamie McNeely, and I live at 296 Skyline Drive in Elkhorn. Our property is the property right above the one in question of the big large plat, and we are the one abutting Skyline. So a few of the issues we have, part of what was talked about was that classifying this to a medium density in a, on a five-acre lot we think is inappropriate. If it's truly just a frontage issue, we believe an exception should be placed on the frontage instead of totally reclassifying because it is inappropriate for the areas. Nearly 100% or 99% of the properties on Skyline are R1. Additionally, we think that it would have less requirements placed on setbacks and how far they can be to our property and other properties. Additionally, as was previously talked about, the watershed area, it, since we have a direct view, it is a 30-foot ravine between dividing that property line, which directly leads into the Elkhorn River. We have a lot of concerns from an environmental standpoint of how that will impact and impact our property. From an erosion standpoint, we've already seen our yards start to erode into this property, and we are afraid if the ravine is essentially plugged up from the proposed driveway, and additionally, from tearing down 25% of the trees on that property, that that would further lead to erosion of our property. And as I said, we're already seeing that, we've already had to sandback areas of our property to prevent erosion from happening further. Additionally, that area is a lot of wildlife there. There are eight bald eagles that are currently fly right in that area, there's a lot of owls, there's a lot of bats in that area, and we don't believe there's been any studies done on the, how it will impact the animals of that area. So that is my testimony on it.
Thank you, Jamie. All right, are there any other opponents?
I feel very short here. My name's Heather Bigga Zieger, and I am the resident, along with my husband Wesley Zieger, at 290 Skyline Drive. So we are on the south border of, I'm sorry, the north side of the property in question. We are in opposition to this for all the reasons listed by the folks from Hillendale and 296. Our home shares over 500 feet of the property line, so I think we are gonna take a substantial hit from this, especially with the setbacks. Going from the 25 to 10-foot setback seems an unreasonable expectation to put on a homeowner when you have bought a property, especially for that reason, for having that space. I think the de-disturbing and defoliating and detreating that is going to begin to make this, to even begin to make the ravine passable, is going to impact the erosion, the loose soil. I know you guys have heard all this, it is a big concern. So I think a picture is really worth, you know, a thousand words. So I think to kind of characterize the area, it's good to show you what we're talking about. This isn't a cornfield that's easily.
You need to put it on this.
I will, just a second. Just saying, this is not a cornfield, this is a very unique property, so I think you kind of need to see what it looks like.
Just on that table, yeah. And you'll see it on the screen here, so.
Okay, just to give you an idea, looking from, can you hear me?
Sorry.
That is looking down from our property into this property, so looking, whatever direction I said that is. Looking sort of southwest, kind of wonky property line, so it's kind of hard to have the orientation, but looking into densely wooded, heading deep into the ravine.
Are you on payroll?
You're gonna do that for every case now. You just gotta look.
And my lovely assistant here. So, yeah. So that is looking from the property line up towards our property, our home. You can see it's very steep, that's pretty close to the line, that is going to be a significant difference, that 15 feet encroaching into our property. As soon as you remove all those trees, we're talking significant erosion. Next slide, please. Again, showing property line between our two properties, heading into the ravine. I didn't want to go traipsing through there, I know you have Brad.
Is that sloping towards the river, then?
That is sloping into the ravine. It's two ravines that kind of come together, there's a bit of an island, and then into the ravine, deeper ravine. These are all just kind of fluff, so, same idea. Next, we. Keep going. Okay, densely wooded, this is the whole entire property, most of the property. Again, reference, thank you. That, I think, gives, shows that kind of narrow version of what the property looks like, and why everybody in our group is so concerned about the drainage. This is sits Skyline Drive, my friend Jamie, they sit at the top by Skyline Drive, they are essentially, this is essentially the main drainage for this whole entire area. This is the watershed draining into the Elkhorn River. I think there's six or seven property owners bordering around, as well as the adjacent properties in the Hillendale neighborhood that abut to those properties. So I think there's risk for significant impact. Anecdotally, we've lived in our home for 22 years, the property at 296, we've watched, I think, a week full of dump trucks coming eight to 10 hours a day. My four-year-old son at the time was thrilled, it was the best thing he'd ever seen, but they dumped fill for days and days and days. And that was not even close to the re, the areas we're talking about here, nor to just get a road in. So the disruption to get to that seems, A, astronomical in cost, but also extremely disruptive, and the impact really unknown, and how that's gonna affect everybody around us. Looking, my son likes to fly his drone and take pictures, came in handy, so you can see, I'm gonna point to this area. This here is the drainage ravine we're talking about. All of that funnels into there, all of the, that, that kind of shows the property lines, not quite exact, but, um, there's a lot, there's a lot of water draining there. There's a lot of trees holding everything in place. I think this is, this really needs to be investigated further before there's anything else that's done here. And it's, it's been deemed a very similar property, at 260, was devalued from about 200,000 down to 30,000, this is my neighbor, because of these issues, that it was deemed, I will say it wasn't deemed unbuildable, but the, it was assessed because it was, seemed to be too costly and too prohibitive to build on it. Am I missing anything?
How many more pictures do you have?
That, I think, is the last one.
Okay.
That's it. So, in essence, I just want to say that for the majority of us, our home and surrounding property is our greatest investment. We're not developers, we're not real estate moguls. We own our homes because we love living there, and any sort of threat, I think you can tell we're kind of a protective bunch about, about this area. It's different, it's unique, and I think the threat is real to impact it. Everyone knows how bad water issues are. I think everyone probably in here, if you raise your hand, if you had a water issue in your house, this really exists for this whole area. We all kind of sit in bowls, we all sit in hills, so we hope that you will please respect this and look into this further before giving sort of, any sort of approval.
Okay, thank you, Heather. And thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other opponents that wish to speak with new testimony?
I know it's, this is going on a while, so I'm gonna be real brief.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Tom Sackett, and I live at 21839 Hillendale Road. So I'm one of these people that are affected. So basically, I wanted to give the personal effect it has on people, because I'm not gonna give you any of the technical stuff, I don't have that kind of knowledge anyways, but, uh, myself, I've waited, I've saved my entire life to purchase this home. I worked as a Douglas County Deputy Sheriff for 26 years, and finally, my dream, dream came true where I could buy this beautiful house, and now I, I'm deeply concerned about these water issues. I'm one of these that's had a lot of water issues, but it wasn't from the outside forces, it's from, from inside. But regressing from that, basically, what I want, want to say is that I'm already seeing with the more houses that have been developed around there, the last few ones, wildlife and everything else is completely changing around there. And like she says, it's such a unique place, and I just don't think it's fair to me and all the other people in that neighborhood to let something like this go through, especially if it's gonna decrease our property values, and I'm real concerned that it will. I've heard people already tell me that have been interested in my home, how unique of a place it is, and if this goes through, I think it's gonna change things completely. And I don't think that's right for me or my neighbors, and for Bonnie. If anybody knows what she went through, a living hell, and what she's had to deal with her house, we can't put other people through this. So, that's it. Thank you.
All right, any other opponents? Is there one? Again, name and address for the record, please, and if you please just present new testimony for us.
Yes, my name is John Ferguson, my address is 21848 Hillendale Road. I have been asked to read a statement from a, another neighbor that is adjacent to the property in question, is that permissible?
Sure.
I have not reviewed this ahead of time.
How long is the letter?
That long.
You can present it for, as evidence, if you'd like to do that, and we'll enter it into the.
How do I present it as evidence? It's already been presented and sent in.
We already have, they already have copies.
Okay, this is Chris Bays.
Yeah, we got, we got.
Okay.
A lot here.
I do have some show and tell, I'll try to make it as brief as possible. This was not sent in ahead of time, so I do have. And I hear that I have an assistant over here. Okay, my primary concerns with this proposal is the feasibility, safety, and the potential downstream consequences to homeowners that might buy into this potential subdivision or may purchase homes that are developed in this area. So what I wanted to talk a little bit about was... So what I wanted to talk a little bit about was water erosion due to just standard river flow. As we can see on this first image, this is from the 1962 aerial survey performed by Douglas County. The property in question, 300 Skyline Drive, is in green. And the blue line indicates, from the aerial photography, what appears to be the edge of the river bluff. This bluff is around 90 to 100 feet above the river and in many places is a sheer cliff face, essentially. I'm gonna go to the next page. Oh, actually, if you go back one, one more, I'm sorry. So you can see the lot lines in orange. Those lot lines closely follow the east bank of the Elkhorn River, indicating that when these were originally platted or laid out, that they followed the Elkhorn River at that time. All right, the red line on this page indicates, again, this is 1962, indicates the east edge of the river or the west side of the river bluff overlooking. And this page represents where, in, this is a 2024 aerial photo, the blue section indicates land that is no longer there. And a lot has fallen into the river and has washed away and is completely gone.
I mean, that whole section in blue at one time was landmass.
Yes, absolutely. The next page is similar, but it does show in aggregate that the square footage or the area of land that has been lost and washed away is 9.71 acres, plus or minus a bit. I'm sure this measurement was performed with blue beam and it was accurately scaled to the map dimensions. All right, we can skip the next one, actually. So that's a pretty wild amount of land that has just disappeared. And no one that was around in 1962 when that aerial photo was taken or when these properties were platted is in this room, I'm sure. And there's very little historical understanding of what this area looked like and what is happening with that river. If we can go to the next page. All right, this is an aerial photograph from 1938. Skyline Drive is in red. It's a little bit different now than it was then, but it's in roughly the same area. And then in blue, which you can't really see, it shows the, the edge of the, the east edge of the Elkhorn River. All right, if we go to the next page. This is the same with the lot lines removed. You can kind of see the blue below the, the white, whited-out section, which is how it appeared on the Dogus website. Next page. Again, that was 1938. Now, this is aerial photography from 1962, and this is prior to any significant development. In fact, you can see the beginning of development and infrastructure work in the Chappa Hill neighborhood, which is on the lower part of the page with the more white roadways, very few houses. And then north of that is what is being developed into skyline ranches at this time. And if you look at the river, you can see the blue line on the east bank of the river. That's from the 1938 bank. And the red line is from the 1962 bank or the river bluff edge. Pretty closely aligned, doesn't show significant erosion over that 24-year period. And if we go to the next page, this is 2024. And the green line, which is kind of hard to see on the screens, the green line represents the river bluff as it exists now. And it's a significant change. And all of that change has occurred since this area's been developed. And I am not an engineer. I don't know much about water erosion subsequent to development. But it does seem to be that as development occurred, erosion rapidly accelerated. And whether that was due to, you know, deforestation or removal of trees and plant matter, I don't know. But, but it's pretty severe. And that was over the course of about 60 years, which does make me wonder what's gonna happen in the next 60, because as of right now, if we go to the next page, this was the same elevation contour map that was shown earlier. If you can look closely, you can see that from the, the river sits at about 1,100 feet of elevation and the top of the river bluff stands at about 1,190 feet of elevation. So there's a 90-foot drop there. It's not gently sloping most of the way. There are, is a lot of sheer cliff face involved that seems to cove off over time and just disappears into the river and gets washed away. And then the last page is simply some photos taken from adjacent properties showing the river bluff. And again, this is about around 90 feet or so in elevation gain above the river. And these were taken yesterday. And that concludes. Yes?
On your page, 2024 aerial, the legend on the right, the, the, the green line, that's actually 2024, right? Not 62?
Should have numbered my pages.
That's a third from the last.
Correct, yes. I forgot to change the label. The green line is 2024.
Okay. Makes more sense.
So I, I am concerned about the, again, the downstream, no pun intended, downstream consequences of people buying into a potential development, not knowing that there are very likely going to be problems down the road in the future, possibly within that person's lifetime.
Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, any other opponents? New testimony. See a nine, I'll close the public hearing. Brad, you want to come back up and address some of those issues that were raised? And I've got a list of them here if you don't have them.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. We did meet with a few of the neighbors. Brad Hike, 10836 Old Mill Road, Omaha, 68154. We did meet with the, a few of the neighbors last week at the 300 Skyline Drive and the existing house. John and Bonnie were there. I have not met with Heather, Jamie, or Tom. I can, I thought Bonnie described the soil situation very well. One thing to talk about is the sewer connection with the septic system. At our pre-app meeting with the city, it was told to us that we could do a septic system because it's not currently, it's over the ridge line. So a septic system on the west side there. Or if the applicant wanted, they could connect to someone else's pressure system. I think the houses down on Hillendale have a pressure system that lift it back to city sewer. So one of the neighbors expressed interest in allowing that connection to avoid having to do a septic system. Bonnie is correct, there has not been any geotechnical exploration done on this yet. It's more investing that time and effort after we know that this can be a buildable plat and is zoned to what the applicant wants. There was a little concern about doing a whole subdivision. This applicant is only going to do at most one single-family house on the lot. There's the existing house, and then there'd be one new house potentially. The applicant agrees that the habitat is very unique out there, and that is the reason for purchasing this property, wants to protect it as much as possible. There is a lot of drainage issues. You saw the ravines on there. Generally speaking, those ravines are entirely on the unplatted parcel. They do cross a little bit on the lot 300. But generally, it's accepting water from all of the neighbors and uphill. So this property would not be putting or discharging any runoff onto neighbors. It is receiving runoff from the neighbors. With that, we still are requesting approval for the preliminary plat and rezoning and understand the layover for the final plat.
Do you know about any of the, the fill that's been dumped on, on the site? Are you aware of any of that?
I am not aware of any fill that's been dumped on there.
And do you know, do, I'm not an expert, I don't know if anyone here, maybe he is, but do rivers sometimes change their path, of course, due to floods or other environmental events?
I don't study rivers, but I, I, as I understand, they meander over hundreds of years. And, you know, he had aerials that showed that it changes path slightly, yeah.
Brad, I just got a couple observations. Very familiar with the area, as I lived there, in that area for 20 years. There's a lot of problems along that ridge with houses moving, with drainage, with all kinds of other issues. And I'm just, it's not our, it's not our place as a body to tell somebody whether they're wise or not, you know, to put a house somewhere. But, you know, the erosion is, is a real concern and the movement of the soils en masse because of that glacial till is a reality on there. And it just seems to me like the, whatever happens here, if this moves forward, that, you know, the geotech is an absolute, that you, you're gonna have to do some, there's, there's a house not far from here that spent a million dollars keeping it from flying, you know, sliding downhill, you know? And so it's a reality. And you, with all that, that grade differential between the water line and skyline, that's just, even putting a road in there, you know, and managing the runoff from that road, are there gonna be any, or do you anticipate any, anything to, to retain the water, to slow the water down so that, so that it doesn't exacerbate the erosion that's already there?
Honestly, no real plans have been done for the house. There would be one crossing of the north ravine or drainage path. That would, in my eyes, create somewhat of a grade control structure. Typically, culverts help stabilize. There'd be energy dissipation on the downstream side of that. It would be a single-family residence, so there wouldn't be any detention requirements for the single-family house. But there, in the drainage way where the covert was put in, there would be some energy dissipation.
There, there'd have to be with that, so.
And, and one other thing, the applicant, there is a scenario where we're back here in front of you to replat this into one lot. He's talked about the potential to just rebuild where the existing house is as well. But this is just trying to keep the existing house and, and have the opportunity to create, to build one new single-family house.
And that's it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Okay, close the public hearing. Eric, what do you have for us? I closed the public hearing already. Thank you. I already closed it. Thank you.
Yeah, so obviously, here on the ridge line, there's, there's always environmental concerns and making sure that we're, you know, doing the best we can to lessen any impact or, you know, potential problems with the surrounding properties that are there now or any new development. So, you know, I, we do look at the slopes. Obviously, there are some extreme slopes. We do think placement of the house should be situated in a way that, you know, lessens those impacts. And, and that is definitely what the master plan seeks. And there are, this area, there's not specific zoning code that has specific requirements that the Ponca Hills overlay has in the northeast portion of our city. But we do take those into consideration when we look at areas here on, on this ridge line as well. So staff has done that. So there are still a few items that need to be addressed. That's why the, the recommendation for the layover, the final plat. But, yeah, we strongly encourage to lessen any impact. There are certain requirements for the building permit here that will be required. So, you know, as far as the river, you know, those that live in this area, you know, they can speak better to it. And of, of course, there was major change with, with the flood in, I think, 2019, was it? Some of, some of the pictures is probably due to water level elevation, just when I'm scrolling on my iPad here with the different years. And, you know, the, the aerial photography, it does the best that it can. You know, it's not perfect, though, when you go back and, and parcel lines. So, you know, I'm not saying that there isn't change to the banks or, you know, to the, to the, you know, the, the water level of the river, but some of that does have in, into the depth as well. So with that being said, staff recommends approval, I guess I should touch just briefly. You know, really, the difference between R1 and R2 is, is just a lot size minimum as well as lot width and, and a few setbacks. So, yes, the surrounding area is mostly R1, although there is R2 when you get on the east side of Skyline Drive as well as on the west side of the Elkhorn River. So R1 through R5 is all considered low-density residential. We are comfortable with the R2. It, it basically allows a slightly smaller lot, but I think the applicant's representative explained why they were seeking that. But really, it is only for one new additional home. So as far as the density, you know, I understand the testimony of what was said, but this isn't a new subdivision. It, whether the, the new lot was R1 or R2, it's still one lot. So staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R1 to DR and R2. Approval of the waiver to Section 5384D lot frontage. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 10 conditions in the report and layover of the final plat.
Questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
A motion to approve the rezoning from R1 to DR and R2. Approval of the waiver of Section 5384D lot frontage. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 10 conditions and layover of the final lot.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Kathy, will you report the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
For a striker?
I'm gonna vote no. I just don't believe that that building under renovation, they replaced it with, they were building the building in the middle.
So Longo? Moore? Rupert? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, three to two.
Okay, thank you. Four to.
Four to, sorry.
All right, four to. And then the other item on, for layover, Eric. Number 30, yeah. No, no.
Oh, no, we already covered that.
We, okay, but they, what they, what was in the motion? Okay, all right.
That's already covered.
Okay, okay, thank you. That one, item's been covered then. All right, now, screen back, so where are we at? Act 230, I believe, all right? Okay, next is item number 30, which was on consent for approval and was pulled off. And this was case number C717089. Applicant's Omaha Public Schools is on consent, was on consent for approval. The request is approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the DR district. Property is located within an ACI overlay, ACI area of significance importance overlay district, location 12200 Burke Road. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Lenora Nelson, Omaha Public Schools, 4041 North 72nd Street. Good afternoon, and I just want to start by thanking you all for your service to the City of Omaha. As a former building official and zoning administrator, I know it's a, it's a thankless but essential job, so thank you all for what you do. Just wanted to pull this off consent agenda to update some of the information that was in the original packet. I have a summary for you on the letter and a revised drawing, which is page two of the handout. The three bullet points on the, on the original application I've, I've outlined on the letter, the, the original application called for maximum area of 368.25 square feet. We've reduced that to 258 square feet. The overall sign budget was proposed 494.75. We've reduced that to 384.75. And we are asking for a slight six-inch increase in the allowed maximum wall height from 20 feet 10 inches to 21 feet 4 inches. We are, it's essentially a 30% reduction in the overall square footage of the proposed sign with a minimal 2.5% increase in overall height. So just wanted to make sure that what you are all going to be voting on was the correct and accurate information. And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those for you.
Had you shared any of this previous to this meeting with the planning department? Have you shared any of this previous to this meeting with the planning department?
No, we just.
Just now, this is new information today.
Right, and so we have been working with the architect and the signage consultant. Part of the reason for this change is, you know, we have heard that maybe there was some concern from a neighborhood member. So I would think that a 30% reduction would be welcomed. But also, just from a construction and maintenance point of view, this actually will allow us to raise it up a little bit away from the solid mass brick wall, which will allow us to access it better for maintenance. And then this also will kind of reduce the amount of structure needed to support this item. So, overall, design intent is the same, just wanted to make sure that the numbers on the document are correct and didn't want to prolong this process. I know we're going to the Zoning Board of Appeals next week, so I want to make sure you had what you needed.
Okay. Thank you. Any question? All right, any other proponents wish to speak?
Thank you.
Are you speaking?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on in.
Proponent?
Yeah, proponent. Name and address, please.
A.J. Campbell, I live at 12061 Grant Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Is the architect on this project, who's been designing this for the past almost 10-plus years. We're just looking to get this thing to the finish line. And I know that there's a lot of excitement from this Omaha Public Schools and with Burke alumni on this. We worked really closely together for the past 10 years to get this designed and what we want it to be. Yeah, I've got a couple of photos if we want to share them, but it's the same thing that you guys have already seen.
Yeah, they're in the pack.
I'm sorry?
I think they're in the pack, the photos are in the pack. Okay, good, thank you. Any other proponents? Are there any opponents wish to speak? See none? Oh, got one? Whoa, 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 whoa. It's kind of an odd camera angle. Man, that was a good save. All right, sir, you've got evidence there it looks like to present, so name and address for the record, please.
David Hahn, I live at 109 South 126th Avenue. My home is directly across the street from, on Burke Boulevard, from the west parking lot. Two concerns, one is the main concern is the size of this sign. I look out my ma, my front door, and this is what I would see. It looks more like a billboard, I think, than it does the sign for a building. Kind of ironic, the sign for Burke Boulevard that is located at 120th and Burke Boulevard has thousands of cars passing by this street every day. This particular sign would have maybe a few hundred that are students and teachers primarily. And Burke Boulevard is a fairly quiet street, in my opinion, and I live on it. But that's how I see it. There aren't any other major roads going by. It is, it also seems like this is a lot larger than it's needed. Burke Stadium has been, was constructed, constructed, I believe, in the late 1960s. There's never been a sign around Burke Boulevard. They do a magnificent job hosting the State Track Meet. It's a great event for Omaha and the state. Not opposed to that, not opposed to the press box. I think that's also a great upgrade and very much needed. It's just the sign that I think is an enormous sign that I would look at as a homeowner in that area. I don't think anybody has ever not been able to find Burke Stadium, either going into the East Stadium or the West Stadium. Both sides are there. And the other comment I heard from a neighbor said it looks like they built a structure to hold up the sign. And that's about it. One other concern is on the proposed, on the statement proposed usage, the total square footage of signage in that, on that campus, said it was like 126 and a half square feet. I don't believe everything was counted on this. I think there's a sign in the front of the building, there's, with one on the, they did count the one on the 120th and Burke Boulevard. The activities sign, activities entrance sign is not included. The signage on the baseball, I wouldn't think is included as well. Anyway, that's my statement.
Thank you, David. Are there any other opponents?
Anthony Klow, 133 South 126th Avenue, two doors down from Mr. Hahn. I want to echo essentially what Mr. Hahn said. I myself am a Burke alumni. I don't know why I bought a house where I could view my high school, but I did. And I remember, I went to church across the street at St. Luke. I remember working State Track Meet parking. I very much love State Track. I think it's a phenomenal event. And I think that Burke and OPS are lucky to have the stadium, and I'm very glad that they invested money into redoing it. That being said, I also agree with Mr. Hahn that at no point has anybody ever struggled to find the Burke Stadium. And having to put a big sign up to say, hey, here's Burke Stadium, it's unnecessary, especially because they just upgraded the huge Jumbotron screen, whatever you want to call it, for football track. It also says Burke on it, you know, and most people who are coming from out of town, who are coming to this event or coming to any event at Burke Stadium, are coming in off of 120th Street up Burke Boulevard the opposite direction. They're not coming down 132nd and coming in the back way. It's a little bit more hidden to get that way. And the thing that I want to point out the most is, for me, it's the lighting. I don't know why it needs to be illuminated at night. That parking lot is ridiculously bright. For reference, that parking lot is up probably 15 feet or so from everything around it. It has, you know, giant parking lot, bright white LEDs that are on 24 hours a day that already provide too much light. And I think having this giant sign and illuminating it at night when nobody's going to events there at night or going to need that to guide their way to the stadium, you know, I would be open to, you know, if they could plant something, you know, along the top of the parking lot, something to just kind of shield the light, I think, you know, from my perspective, that would do a lot just to help with reducing the light that's coming in. I mean, I have to close my, all the blinds on my back door at night just because of how bright it is. And so I'm more concerned about the lighting of the sign and the size of the sign. And just agreeing with Mr. Hahn that it's never been there before, it's never been needed. It does, it looks great, it looks nice. I just don't know that that's what I want to have to stare at constantly.
Is it on the entire night?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Is the sign on the entire night or just?
Well, there's not currently a sign. It just, in the description that we were mailed, it said that it would be illuminated essentially from the top and from below so that it would be lit up.
You're concerned with the illumination of that?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, because.
You live by the stadium with lights on periodically during football games.
Well, and then the football, those go off, right? It's the security lights that are not, you know, like the, they just stay on the parking lot, I assume, to deter kids from hanging out there, but it doesn't stop them. So, you know, I wish I could have a dimmer for them or something like that. But, you know, really, I think, you know, for my main floor, it's bad enough. But when I get upstairs with my kids, you know, in their rooms, open up to the back and all that light, I mean, it's just, it's so bright at night. I mean, you don't even need a nightlight in their rooms because you close the blackout blinds and there's still enough light coming through. And so I just don't want to add more light to it, and that's my testimony.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Okay, any other opponents? See none, I'll close the public hearing. Lenora, you want to come up and say anything else or from what you've heard? And again, name and address for the record, please.
Lenora Nelson, Omaha Public Schools, 4041 North 72nd Street. Just wanted to kind of bring us back to the point that this permit is not for the current parking lot lighting, which was already there. This lighting on the new sign is really just a wall washer. It does not project any more than, than your typical more design-specific wall washers. I can't answer specifically whether that light's on a timer or not. We do need our lighting to not only help deter folks who are trespassing, but to allow our cameras to show us who's trespassing when we need to pull that footage for Omaha Police, so.
The security lights aren't, Beth?
I would imagine that we probably would. It certainly would not have an on-off switch that we'd rely on somebody to do, but usually, typically, those are on timers. And we set them, you know, for daylight savings and things like that. So, we do conserve electricity where we can with our illumination, so we would make sure we did that here as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Okay, I've closed the public hearing. Eric, we have some new information here for you.
Yeah, so typically, we don't want to receive information at the meeting and try to process it. Quick glance, there is a reduction in the proposed wall sign area and then the overall sign budget. The only thing that's a small increase would be six inches taller in height. With that being said, and the notification's still not going out for next week's Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, staff would be comfortable to that newer height. We could approve the signage for the, you know, the regular, what your packet has for the area and change it with a minor amendment. So by and large, you know, it'd be fine that the ZBA reflects these new sign sizes and staff would be comfortable with that six inches taller in height. The sign will be required to comply with lighting standards. So, yeah, I can't speak for the security lighting, what's out there now, but there are requirements for signage now. So, but we do encourage the applicant to possibly dim that if that is an available feature. You know, obviously, with the proximity to the residential homes across the street. So, staff is supportive of the changes and continue to work with those residents, you know, to keep that light as a minimum, but also provide the security that's necessary for the civic site. So staff makes a recommendation, approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities, subject to obtaining all necessary waivers from the Zoning Board of Appeals prior to obtaining a signed permit.
Okay, any questions? Do I have a rec, or a motion?
Conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the DR District in compliance with the submitted sign plans, subject to obtaining all necessary waivers from the Zoning Board of Appeals prior to obtaining a signed permit.
Okay, and a motion and a second. Kathy, we record the vote, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll move into the regular part of the agenda. I think we covered all the items that were pulled off of consent. So the first part of the agenda is the administrative meeting part. There is no public testimony in this part of the meeting, but there are two items on the agenda to go over. Item number one is case number C-1225037. Applicant is New Style Development. The request is final plat approval of Heartland of America Park replat two, formerly Children's Final Plat, a subdivision inside city limits. Property is located within an ACI area of civic importance overlay district. Location is northeast of 8th and Douglas Street. Eric?
Yes, I'll keep this brief so my voice makes it through the meeting. If the board has any questions, please let me know, but we discussed in the pre-meeting. Staff recommends approval of the final plat, subject to including the standard easement language in the vacation section on the final plat and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion for the approval of the final plat, subject to including the standard easement language in the vacation section of the final plat and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to city council for final action.
Okay, the motion is second. Kathy, we record the vote, please.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Okay, thank you. Next item is item number two, case number, case C-1024. This is still administrative meeting. C-1024256, C-1224257. Applicant is Charleston Homes. Request is final plat approval of Indian Ridge lots 1 through 207, Outlots A through D, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R4. The location is southeast of 204th and Ida Street.
Yeah, so this first phase includes 207 single-family lots. The original preliminary plat included 487. So this is the first phase. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Approval of the final plat, subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Do I have a motion? Anybody?
Motion for the approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Approval of the final plat, subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to the city council for final action.
Thank you. Okay, the motion is second. Kathy, we record the vote, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Rose Sacker? Soto Longo?
Yes.
Moore? Rupert? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six to zero?
Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes the administrative part of the meeting. We'll now move into the public hearing case, so public testimony can be given on any of these cases. First of the heldover cases. Item number three, special use permits, is case number C-825036. Applicant is Reflections Residential Living LLC. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow a large group living in the R4 35 District. This was laid over from our March 5th, 2025 meeting. The location is 9423 Adams Street. May we hear from the applicant? Here? We're somewhat familiar with the project, obviously, but please provide whatever inspiration you have for us.
Julie Loughlin, address is 9423 Adams Street.
Katie Block, 9423 Adams Street.
Want to tell us what's new?
We came in and met with a few of the city planners. They helped us devise a plan that hopefully.
Can you maybe lift that mic up a little bit so we?
There you go. We'll be able to move forward with the approval. We did receive the letter in the mail about having to plant a couple more trees or what have you. So, that's not an issue either with us, so.
We redid the parking to meet the requirements for all of the zoning issues that we had before. And we came up with 10, a room for 10 people to live there with the parking that's allowed. And we were planning, I don't know if you guys noticed on the planning, we were going to put five shrubs that are on the back fence to help block the back neighbors. And then the planning that we sent you actually was missing three trees that are already there. So there are extra trees that are there that weren't on the last, where we updated the parking, so.
And I forgot to have you enter your name and address for the record.
Sorry, I'm Katie.
Did you?
9423 Adams Street.
Oh, that's right, you did. All right, so you've modified it to more, less comply with the requirements that are needed?
Yep. We have.
For this?
Okay.
Questions? Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents wish to speak? If you do plan to speak, maybe just take a seat in front here and we'll call you up.
Hello, thank you, board, for the opportunity to speak. Donald Allison, 6362 South 94th Street. I'm here to oppose the retrofitting of the single-family home located at 9423 Adams Street into a large assisted living facility for the following reasons. Zoning and land use concerns. The proposed retrofit contradicts the existing zoning regulations designed to preserve the residential character of our neighborhood. Converting a single-family home into a commercial care facility undermines the purpose of residential zoning and sets a concerning precedent for the future developments. In addition, there's already a small group living facility within 500 feet of the proposed 9423 Adams Street location. This small group living facility blends well with the community and has minimal disruptions, though, because it's a very small community. This small group living facility blends well with the community and has minimal disruptions though, because it's a very small community. The proposed Adams Street project is so heavily modified, it will no longer be able to be sold as a single family residence, but rather a 12 resident group home. What happens if this property is sold after a number of years? Negative impact on the community's safety infrastructure. Assisted living facilities involve increased traffic from staff, visitors, medical professionals, deliveries, and emergency vehicles. This increased volume will significantly affect the safety of pedestrians, particularly children, and strain our already limited parking facilities. There is an elementary school in the neighborhood and children walk to and from school. It is common for assisted living facilities to have frequent fire and EMS calls. Disruption of neighborhood character. Our community is a peaceful residential area composed of single family homes. The introduction of a large assisted living care facility fundamentally alters the neighborhood's character, diminishing the sense of community that residents value. The physical modifications required, such as ramps, expanded driveways, make the property visually inconsistent with surrounding homes. Lack of community engagement. Residents have not adequately been informed or consulted regarding this significant change. I know the owner sent some letters to some of the neighbors, but I believe the neighborhood as a whole is not fully aware of the proposal or the size and scope of the facility planned. I believe that such a development requires thorough community input and consideration of residents' concerns. Parking. The proposed parking only has five parking stalls. Large facilities rely on constant deliveries for medical supplies, food, linens, and things like that. They often arrive in box trucks and vans too big for tight lots. The vehicles might idle in no parking zones and block residential driveways or create safety issues for traffic and pedestrians trying to maneuver. Additionally, there's a stop sign at the intersection of Adams and Drexel where the property is located. The driveway is only a few feet from the edge. The stop sign is only a few feet from the driveway. If trucks can't pull in the driveway, I can speculate that they'll park at the end of the driveway, basically right in front of the stop sign. Family visits increase on weekends, holidays, or during health declines, overwhelming parking lots. Parking could spill over into the neighborhood's street parking, narrowing the streets, causing traffic and pedestrian safety concerns. Fire and EMS parking and access need to be a consideration for a 10 resident assisted living facility. The fire department would likely have to park on Drexel or Adams Street because they wouldn't, likely would not be able to pull in the driveway. Alternative solutions. I'm not opposed to providing care and support to those in need, but I believe that such facilities belong in appropriately zoned areas that can accommodate for their specific demands. I urge the city to consider a more suitable location rather than disrupt an established residential community. In light of the above concerns, I respect for the request that the planning board reconsider approving this project.
Thank you, Donald.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents that wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing. But Julie or, I can't remember your other name. Yeah, would you come, come, I have a question for you, Rupert. And again, name and address for the record.
Katie Block, 9423 Adams Street.
Julie Loughlin, 9423 Adams Street.
Okay. You know, Donald brought up a, a point that, that I thought of as well, and that is, what happens to this property once you no longer run it as a facility? Like you're, you know, because you're, you're retrofitting it in, in a way that's, that's outside the norm of that area by putting in additional drive and, and what have you, and extra bedrooms, which may be nice for a big family, but there's not too many big families anymore like that. So.
We plan on running it forever.
That's, that's my question. Do you have other facilities that you run?
Not yet, but we're planning on getting more. This is our first one. I currently have a home care company in town that takes care of about 140 people all over the city. Julie owned one before and she sold it a few years ago, but our goal was to buy a house for the next couple of years and retrofit them for memory care specifically. There's such a shortage in this town for memory care that does quality care, and that's been our goal the whole time. None of our residents will be driving. The only people driving will be the caregivers that are coming and going. And it's such a small thing that we'll have a cook that will also do the grocery shopping and buy the supplies that we need. So there will never be a big box truck doing deliveries for anything. It will be caregivers that come and then family members that come. And we will have enough parking that they can park three in the garage. We'll have that tandem parking on the side for two people. And then the, the visitors can still pull into the driveway, essentially. So there will be enough parking for people to not bother the neighbors.
Okay. So is this owned by a, an LLC or a C corp?
We're and I are the owners. We're 50/50. It is an LLC, but we're not a big, huge corporation. She's a nurse and I have a home care company.
So I understand your, your intent is to keep it forever, but what happens when you're not there anymore?
Um, our children will hopefully run it.
But the LLC, the LLC owns the real estate.
Correct.
It does.
Would you be, and I don't even know if we're allowed to do this, I think we are. Would you be opposed to if we limited the special use permit just to the you as the applicant? Are we allowed to do that?
I, I, I don't see why not.
Yeah.
So if the property were to sell, then the?
You can do that, and if, if they were to sell to someone else who, who wanted to do a similar operation, they might be required to come back to planning board or to city council. You have that ability.
You wouldn't be opposed?
No.
Okay.
Can we just address Drew?
Sure.
As well, because we were notified from Turtle Creek that there was a neighborhood association that was very concerned with us doing this.
A Facebook group, not a.
A Facebook group.
Association.
And actually one of our, a former employee of mine and also someone that lives in Turtle Creek let me know about it. I did try to reach out to Drew on Facebook in a message to say, I understand that you are concerned about this. Please message me back. I would be happy to answer any of your questions. And I did not hear back from him. So.
And we, we did the letter that was required back in January and had an open meeting at the home, and there was only three people that showed up to that meeting. And there was plenty of warning for them to come and talk to us about that before, before now. So.
Well, you're providing a very important service, obviously, too, so I hope it goes well for you if you get approved today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. All right, Eric.
Yeah, so obviously this is the third time this has been on the agenda, so we've talked about it pretty extensively. You know, staff did meet with the applicant and they were able to put together a plan that, that does meet all the applicable zoning code regulations. I didn't think we'd get there, obviously, where we stood last month or two months ago, whenever that was. But the proposed changes, the reduction from 12 to 10 residents has helped. Yes, a, a special use permit does run with the land, but you do have the ability to limit it to a specific applicant. So if that is something that you want to add, you could add that as a condition. You know, I, I would just stress that large group living, even though it is a, a larger and perhaps more dense operation than a lot of the single family surrounding homes, it is still a residential classification in the zoning code. So that is why it's allowed in, in all residential districts with, within this district with a special use permit. So just wanted to stress that, that yes, I understand it is more, a little more activity, definitely, than, than most single family homes, although there are some homes that have several cars and a lot of people coming over. So staff is comfortable with the use, provided that they can meet the criteria which they have done. So. With that being said, staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow large group living subject to the five conditions in the report.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Any questions? If not, do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the special use permit to allow large group living on the property subject to the five conditions in the recommendation report, but I'll add a sixth condition that the special use permit is specific to this applicant and does not carry with the land. Is that the right way to say it?
That would, that would be acceptable.
Give you a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Kathy, we record the vote, please.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six to zero.
Thank you. All right. Next item is item 12, I believe, on the regular agenda. Case number C-325082. The applicant is City of Omaha. The request is approval of the 2025 annual action plan. The location is the City of Omaha in the three mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. May we hear from the applicant, the city, please?
Good afternoon. Alyssa Salachek, Omaha City Planning. Here to talk briefly about the 2025 annual action plan. So the plan is the second year of our five-year consolidated plan. It covers the period from January 1st of this year through December 31st. It will be submitted to the Department of Housing and Urban Development following the announcement of our 2025 annual allocation funds for the CDVG home and ESG programs. And because this action plan is subject to our federal budgeting process, the FY 2025 continuing resolution provided level funding to those three programs. And so in this action plan, because we don't have that announcement yet, we're assuming that our 2025 allocations will be the same as 2024. And so for CDVG, the annual allocation is approximately $4.2 million. We estimate $10,000 in program income as well. With the home program, the annual allocation is approximately $1.9 million with $75,000 for program income. The annual allocation for ESG is $369,849. Within the CDVG program, we have several different activities that we've proposed. And the first of those is public facilities. The Simple Foundation will be renovating a building within our single family rehabilitation activity. We anticipate serving 580 households through the city's Affordable Housing Preservation Program and Project House Works Roof Repair and Replacement Program. We also have commercial building improvement activities proposed with a rehabilitation to a commercial building at 3828 Ames Avenue that's anticipated to create four full-time jobs. We have job training activities through programs like Step Up, the Latino Center, CMB Nebraska Program, Salvation Army's Away to Work Program, and then Nebraska Maintenance Academy. With those job training activities, we anticipate serving 130 low-income persons. Demolition activities anticipate 26 buildings demolished or rehabilitated with, within our NRSA's. We have three NRSA's here in Omaha. Code enforcement program similarly looks to inspect 460 units within those NRSA's. Homeownership counseling includes 50 households that are served by the Family Household, Family Housing Advisory Services Program, and then we also anticipate CDVG admin dollars. The home program, then, we have four activities, the first being multifamily housing new construction. And that is, the $300,000 for that home activity are for Arbor Flats, which is a project that will have three home assisted units. For housing rehabilitation, there are seven units that we anticipate serving within the city's rental rehabilitation program. We also propose single family rehabilitation with four households served by Project House Works Urban Homestead Program. And there are home admin dollars for that as well. ESG activities, we have emergency shelter operations through Sienna Francis House and Stevens Center where 3,500 people are anticipated to be served. We also address housing placements with 32 households served by Heartland Family Services and Together. Lastly, there is HMIS support and then ESG admin dollars as well. And that roughly or generally is what we have proposed, proposed in the 2025 annual action plan. I am available to answer questions, but staff does recommend approval.
Just a real quick question for you. So you, you mentioned quite a few agencies there that are benefiting from, from these resources. Do they have to apply or do you identify them as, as a possible source?
Yes. So once a year, we release a request for proposals that allows for different organizations to apply for funding. So they propose a project. Our staff then evaluates those requests, and then we identify our proposed list of projects based on those applications. And so those organizations that were mentioned applied previously, probably about a year and a half ago, for most of them, they would have applied. Or for, I guess for the 25 annual action plan, they would have applied last spring. So they're still waiting to hear what the final allocation will be and then get more information about when those projects might be able to, might be able to move forward, excuse me.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, any questions? Any other proponents wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric?
I would just add, there's a, a lot of hardworking staff in the planning department and other organizations as a result of these funds and led by Kelly and Alyssa, and so they're doing some great work. And it's not, not all about housing, but you know, it is a major generator for assisting with affordable housing here in Omaha. So I just wanted to point that out. Staff recommends approval.
Right, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion? I have a motion and a second. Kathy, we record the vote.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six to zero.
Yeah, great job. Thank you. Next is item number 13, case number C-324058. The applicant, City of Omaha. This is approval, request is approval of the substantial amendment to the 2024 annual plan, annual action plan. The location is City of Omaha in the three mile extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Good afternoon. Kelly Johnson Dorsey, Omaha Planning Department. So this is an amendment to our plan you approved about a year ago, our 2024 action plan. It's to add three projects, the 3030 Upland Parkway, Southside Terrace Phase Two, and Y Street Townhomes. These are all components of our choice south neighborhood. We are proposing to moving these forward into the 2024 annual action plan, whereas the per, prior, they were proposed for 2025 because they are prepared for financial closing this summer. Whereas Arbor Flats were proposing to move from 2024 to 2025, which Alyssa just presented on. So once this is hopefully approved, we'll take it to city council and then it will need to go to HUD for approval as well. Here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric?
Recommend approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? I have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve some, sorry, six to zero.
Just for the audience, we went over a lot of this in pre-meeting as well, so it's not, it wasn't this brief. We got a lot of information in pre-meeting, so we're not just voting on just, just what was provided here today. So I just wanted everyone to know that. Okay, next item is item 15, case number C-325095. The applicant is Planning Department on behalf of City of Omaha. The request is approval of the 3501 Farnum Street Apartments TIF redevelopment project plan. The location is 3501 Farnum Street. May we hear the af, from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Bridget Hathley, City Planning. Is there a, an assistant here?
You're doing a great job interning here. It's awesome.
Yeah. Thank you so much. So as you see on the screen, the yellow shaded area represents the boundary of this TIF project, 3501 Farnum TIF project. It is located at 3501 Farnum Street in the Blackstone District, Business Improvement District even. And it's right along the streetcar line. It is the former WWT News Station Building, if you want to switch to the next. So that is the current condition of the site. And so that site will be razed and a new five-story apartment building with 181 market rate units will be constructed. I think that might be the next one. That's in north elevation. You can keep flipping through. Thank you. So about three of the apartments will be live-work units with two levels. So there were commercial spaces on the ground floor that were proposed originally, and the project owner has decided to make those live-work spaces. And they can, they are here to explain a little bit more if you have questions. But the developer is, and project owner is Green Slate Development. The total investment is about $44 million. The TIF support is about $4.8 million. The project meets the required TIF requirements. It is appropriate land use for this location, and it does comply with the city's master plan. plan, comp plan. So, with that, I would ask for your approval and turn it over to the project owner if they have anything to add.
Thank you, Bridget. Okay, any other proponents?
Matt Dwyer, Green Slate Development, 3555 Farnham Street, I forgot my address, Suite 904. Happy to be here, nice to see you all, just here to answer any questions. They're just three kind of loft-style apartments that somebody might, could run a little, not a public-facing shop, but, you know, could have their office or their, you know, little art studio or something in there.
Okay.
Yeah, just trying to come up with unique and creative ways to program space, yeah. I don't know that we need another bar.
Do you know how many other apartment units around, let's say, a one-mile radius of that area? You know how many there are in that area?
Currently or in planning?
Currently, not including this project, but...
Yeah, I mean, all told, I don't know, Dan, sorry.
The reason I ask that is, I assume you've done some sort of a market study-
Sure.
-to know that there's a need-
Yeah.
...right?
Yeah.
For, and I don't want that area to get oversaturated.
Yeah, no, the market studies would suggest it's still, there's still a demand.
Still demand?
Yeah. You know, I can tell you how many we own, and I can tell you our vacancy rate, and I think that we're willing to take the risk, put it that way.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Are there any, are there any opponents wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Yeah, this is a great project, great, very active area, future streetcar and just everything that's been happening in Blackstone and Midtown, so we're excited for the project. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Eric. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Kathy, we record the vote, please.
Rupert?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Priv six to zero.
Thank you. Next is item 16, case number C325096. The applicant's Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. The request is approval of the Atrium Multifamily TIF Redevelopment Project Plan, location 7270 Cedar Street. Bridget?
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning, and my wonderful assistant over here. So, before you is the Atrium Apartments TIF project. This project involves the comprehensive rehabilitation of a vacant, of a vacant, damaged, and neglected hotel building at 73rd and Cedar Streets. And that's the picture of the former Embassy Suites Hotel. So, it's been vacant for a long time and has, the project owner has seen this as an opportunity to convert this into living spaces. So, it will become a six-story building that will contain 197 market-rate studio apartments with amenities that include a fitness center, pool, and community room. You can continue. I think there's only one more. So, that is the site plan of the site. So, you see the surface parking and then the footprint of the building. So, the developer is Urban Village. The total investment is about $22 million. The support for the TIF is about $3.6 million. The project meets the requirement for TIF. It is an appropriate land use for this location, and it does comply with the city's master plan, comp plan. And with that, I ask for your approval, and the project owner, developer, is here.
Thank you, Bridget.
Scott Simrad, Urban Village, 1750 South 85th Avenue. Bridget gave a great summary of the project, I'm here answering questions.
Do you intend, I assume you tend to keep the existing structure in place-
Yeah.
...and just renovate the interior of the-
Yep.
...structure, is that correct?
Yep, exactly.
Pretty much.
Yep.
Very good. Okay, any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I'm here. I don't know where Eric went. Yeah, Dave Manslott, City Planning Director. Yeah, good project, a good reuse of the building that's, has been stated, has been vacant and in a state of disrepair. So, yeah, we're excited about the project, and we recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Do I have a motion? I have a motion and a second. Kathy, we record the vote, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve six to zero.
Thank you. Okay, next is item number 31, case number C7-25068. The applicant is Laura Harpinian. The request is approval of conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential in the CC district. The location is southwest of 243rd and Chicago Streets. So, before I open up the hearing here, obviously, I think a majority of people are here to maybe testify on this and maybe one other item on the agenda. Again, I'll just bring it, make sure that you're providing new testimony. We've gotten written testimony from you as well, so we know there's a lot of feedback here on this. So, with that said, I'll go ahead and open up the testimony, so please, Jim.
Good. Mr. Chairman, Planning Board members, Jim Bouger, 10250, reading the circle. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I'm not going to make a real-long presentation. I know there's a lot of folks here that want to talk about the project, most of whom we met with last week at a public meeting with the residents of West Shores. I would like to thank Carl Bordel, who you may hear from today, who's the head of the homeowners association, and their attorney, Brian Hennessy, who were helpful in coordinating the meeting and making it run in a favorable manner because there is a lot of passion about this project, about the area in general. So, with that, I'm just maybe provide a brief summary. Jerry Reimer is here of Urban Waters, along with Laura Harpinian, Larry Smith, who's with the Von Architects and also is one of the owners of the land of the, land that the project is going to sit on. He's not one of the investors in the project, but he does, their family currently owns the land. And then I have Doug Dreason here from Thompson, Dreason, Dorner, who's a civil engineer for the project. And one of the issues that we're going to talk about a little bit have to do with some engineering challenges with the Village of Waterloo and the current sewer service and projected sewer service for the area. So, we'll be happy to answer any questions as we go through this public testimony. And Doug and Larry are both here to help maybe answer some questions if they come up during the testimony. So, this is a 125, more or less, unit apartment project that's part of the West Shores development. This area is currently Zone CC, which is kind of a carryover to the zoning that was in place when the city annexed the city of Elkhorn and took over the jurisdiction of the, the ETJ was extended to include this project, converted it to CC, which allows a lot of uses, office buildings, car washes, lot of uses. We are proposing a residential use, which is a conditional use for CC zoning, and that's what we're here today before the board on. And I just, I would recognize the fact that there's one major issue that we're facing with this project, and that is the sewerability of the project. The Village of Waterloo is, reached capacity essentially with their sewer system, and we're all well aware of that, of that issue. Jerry is willing to deal with that issue moving forward, but he would like to get this conditional use permit, check that box, so he can spend more money to investigate the site, keep moving this project forward while that problem is solved, hopefully to the benefit of the SID, to the residents of the area, and also this project, and the Village of Waterloo, which is still expanding. So, with that, I don't know if you have any questions, but I will be happy to answer that. It is a luxury, high-end apartment project. Jerry's a resident in this area. He's going to work with the residents as we try and move this project forward over the next several months and probably next year, a year and a half, to come to solutions on some of the things that maybe some of the residents have concerns about in addition to the sewer. So, he wants, he does not want to create enemies in here, and you're going to hear a lot of passion about why you may already have. So, anyway, we'll be happy to answer any further questions, and thank you for, thank you for time today.
Jim, thanks, Jim. Okay, any other proponents wish to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Satyam, and I live at 10306 Rosewater Parkway. I want to preface this by saying I'm not a resident of this community, and I want to be mindful of all the residents in this community and the potential developments with any comments I make. I've been fortunate to get to know the developer as well as see many Urban Waters projects. In my opinion, you could view any of their projects at random and notice the finishes and attention to detail they encompass. Urban Waters is widely regarded as one of the finest operators in the city and have done not only quality projects with a long-term view, but ones that had a real need in the market, including their revitalization of Midtown and their award-winning Missing Middle Project in Papillion. Their vertical integration of development, construction, and management give them accountability and ownership at every stage of the process. In terms of the economic benefit, I believe this is a sizable project that will generate a considerable amount of annual tax revenue for the county, as well as the local schools, which account for 50% of the property tax distribution. I understand this is a unique situation with a developer living in this particular community for 20 years, but assume this would result in them having an even greater sense of sensitivity and responsibility with the project that another developer may not have been as fortunate to experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents wish to speak this time? Seeing none, are there any, how many are going to testify in opposition? Just raise your hand for me, please.
If you're in opposition...
Opposition? No, how many are going to testify? Testify, not in opposition. Okay, just a handful of you? Okay, great.
No, I'm not in opposition.
Okay. So, with that, I'll go ahead and open it up for the opposition. So, if you are planning to speak, maybe, now, there's probably not much room up front, but just be prepared when I call for more discussion, okay? Name and address, please.
My name is Brian, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Morrissey. I'm here on behalf of the West Shores Lake Homeowners Association. My address is 12910 Pierce Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114. I have with me today Carl Bordell. He is the president of the West Shores Lake Homeowners, West Shores Lake Homeowners Association. Bob Edick, he is a member of the board of the SID that we, that Jim was just talking about. I have Garrett Johnson. He's an engineer who did a study on the capacity. And Melissa Smith is here.
Oh, there she is.
Melissa Smith is the administrator and clerk for the Village of Waterloo. And then I have about 100 other people who I think are in opposition and maybe slightly different. If you are here in opposition, would you please raise your hand? Okay. So, West Shores Lake is a rural neighborhood with limited utilities-
Brian, will you speak into the mic?
I thought it was. West Shores Lake, there we go, is a rural neighborhood with limited utilities and a fragile infrastructure that was never intended to support the higher densities associated with an R7 district. Rather, the site was planned, developed, and marketed as a marina and commercial use center to serve the needs of the neighborhood. The covenants of the West Shores Lake provide that this site is to be zoned and designated as a marina center, I'm sorry, a marina and commercial center. So, the owner of this property should be, is authorized to use the facility as a marina and a commercial center, not as residential. The request for this conditional use permit to put multifamily ignores the original developer's promises, the original developer's covenants, and his intent, as he explained it, to people buying in this neighborhood for the last 20 years. The land use for this property is not, proposed project is not compatible with the current use. So, the low-density residents of West Shores have less than two homes per acre. If you look at the West Shore neighborhood, which I think I have... Somewhere I have here it is. West Shores has kind of a standing density of about, less than two homes per acre. The development project suggests that they will build about 32 units per acre, so 16 times the density in this small location. The, in terms of population, if you use kind of the standard, you know, design criteria, it's 10 times more dense on the site. Also, the height and scale of this project are not compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. To the east is a two-story restaurant and event center. To the west is the, is a, just a traditional residential home. And then to the, I guess it would be the south is the lake. And so, being four stories tall, this property will stick out above all the other properties in this area, you know, like a sore thumb. It will, it will stick out and be visible in what West Shore becomes known for, rather than for a place where you can raise a family. The, also, the proposed project, as we understand it, does not have any real mitigants or protections for the lake. So, with that number of people, say, over 300, typically at West Shores, you're 75 feet away from the lake, your home is 75 feet from the lake. Here, you're going to be 30 feet away. The edge of the lake is a seawall. It's not a gradual beach, it's not a place you can walk in, it's a place you can fall in. The, this proximity obviously creates concerns because the lake is private and owned by the homeowners association. And so, when someone would enter the lake, either deliberately or accidentally, they would have great difficulty scaling a four-foot-high seawall to get back onto this property. And so, the homeowners association has great concerns about the safety of the residents and the associated liability that we would incur. These lots each have a single, can you go back to the other one? Single access entry. And so, this one opens directly onto the main intersection for this part of West Shores. So, the West Shores, that road, you can kind of see to the north there, yes, that's the entrance, and it's going to dump directly onto that with a single point of entry. The other neighborhood does not go directly onto that, but it opens onto a small residential road without lights, without curbs and gutters, and built to a residential standard. This type of congestion, we think, will exacerbate the restaurant and the event center there. You know, there's no sidewalks for children to ride their bicycles at West Shores. There's no place to walk but on the street. And dumping this number of people onto the small neighborhood street, we think is dangerous. The current design does not allow safety vehicles to get to the back of the property. As we understand the design, you go through a tunnel, if you will, go through this parking garage to get to the back of the property. Well, those tunnels that, that under apartment access creates height restrictions. In other words, larger ladder trucks probably can't get through that. But just importantly, even if it could, fire and structural issues at an emergency would preclude them from getting to the back of the property. Can you get that back there? Add to the fact that the Waterloo Fire Department does not have a ladder system that can get to the top of this property. If there's a fire, Waterloo Fire cannot get to the top floor and will struggle to get to the third floor. And so, they can't rescue people from a fire, they can't effectively fight fires from that height. In candor, there is, it's called a tri-mutual agreement with the City of Omaha and Bennington. And City of Omaha and Bennington have committed to bringing more fire protection if it's available. The closest one is 144th and Maple, which is 11 miles and 15 minutes away, and Bennington is 15 miles and about 25 minutes away. We think this creates an unsafe- We think this creates an unsafe scenario here. And so until the property can comply with those, we think it should be denied. Finally, and Jim referenced it a little bit, there are challenges, real challenges, to the SID water wastement plant, or water waste treatment. And, and I think Bob will speak a little bit more to that. But in, in short, in 2000, the SID signed an agreement with the City of Waterloo. The SID paid money to have the City of Waterloo build out its wastewater treatment plant and limited itself to four criteria. The SID hired an engineer, I think it's in your packet, I think it's Garrett from Bricklayer. And his analysis says that this project will exceed all four of those projects, all four of those criteria. And so that would put the SID in a concern. And it is particularly challenging because I think I've heard a few times that the applicant's position is that the SID has a duty to serve, you know, wastewater at this site. And ignoring the legalities of it, it seems harsh to me that this development is asking the subdivision and the homeowners of that SID to pay for a percentage of the project that is gonna solely benefit them. The last thing I have is just a few minor notes. There's not been a lot of discussion in this. The, from, from the day we found out about this project to today is less than two weeks. Most of the homeowners here got two or three days' notice for our meeting last Thursday. For many homeowners, that's really the first time they heard anything about this project other than maybe it exists. And so we don't think there's been any real dialogue. When we went to that meeting, it was a full presentation, same presentation that you'd already had, that was already on your board. And so there was no opportunity for neighborhood dialogue, or, or interaction, or input. And Jerry is a good developer. I do think he would listen. I don't think he did this time. Jim is an excellent lawyer and knows how this stuff works. I don't understand why, when they knew this was coming, they didn't engage the, the neighborhood earlier and in more depth. I suspect it's because they thought it would not be supported. And so they decided to limit that exposure. I don't know that, you might ask them, but, but really, less than two weeks of total notice does not seem appropriate. Finally, I think that this board should consider this because of the unique nature of the Elkhorn Annexation, and it was under Waterloo, and then it was under, or Waterloo and Douglas County, and then it was under Omaha. I think that the process is backwards. I think that this board should deny this and tell such time as we have sewer, water, utilities, all those things figured out. And so for those reasons, I would ask that this board deny this. Now, I think Carl has a few things.
Yes. Thank you, Brian.
I'm sorry, any questions?
Not right now, we might later. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to come up here and address the board. My name is Carl Bordal. I am a resident. My address is 25011 Capital Circle, Waterloo, Nebraska, 68069. Been a resident of West Shores for 16 years, and I am currently the West Shores HOA president. West Shores HOA Board is opposed to this project. We did receive a notice of the meeting, which we personally received our notice in the mail on Monday, I believe, or Tuesday, for a Thursday meeting. We were able to get some information collected at the meeting, some of which I'll kind of talk about here. But after the meeting and, and the information about the project was exposed and given to our residents, the HOA did a poll of our residents. And that poll, we basically utilized a electronic, a commercially-available electronic voting system that we've used at the lake for five-plus years or so, that, that do all of our votes for covenant changes, board members, those types of things. We wanted to get an overall understanding of the position of the people on the lake and the residents. That came back, a little detail, so what we basically asked, and I believe you guys have the results of that, what we basically asked, do you want the board to inform the planning committee that we would like you to deny this? And the results of that, we had 200, we have 291 lots in our, in our resident, in our neighborhood. 279 voted. 275 of those votes was to deny. There was one vote to approve. And as you can see there, Jerry is a member of our HOA, and he voted to approve. And we had three to abstain. It's a 98.56% vote asking the board to deny this, this project. One other point, the restaurant, it's been referenced a couple of times, it's in the building, the commercial building up there. The owner of that restaurant lives at the lake and is a resident as well, and they voted to deny this project. Lake usage is certainly a concern. Our lake is utilized for boating, swimming, fishing, typical activities that are allowed by our covenants, our lake rules, and the state of Nebraska. It's the HOA's responsibility to enforce those rules to the best of our ability. We have a privately-funded boat patrol that is out there on most weekends. We have board members, we have residents that look for violations and report those, not so that we can be the big, bad, mean people, but so we can enforce the safety. I always tell people, you're not turning in your neighbor, you're saving somebody's grandchild or, or somebody from getting hurt on the lake. That's really what we do enforcement for. We have a process in place to handle, record, and, and deal with the violations on the water. That includes verbal warnings, financial fines, and at the worst case, revocation of boating capacity or capabilities for the remainder of the year. We have no recourse, although the developer has said that they don't plan on any lake access for their tenants, which is great. They've also said at that meeting, with a direct question by me, that they, there was only so much they can do to enforce that. Well, with the HOA's responsibility to enforce these rules on the water, we feel that that burden drops directly on our lap. The problem with that scenario is we have no way of enforcing those. Outside of trying to call the sheriff in the middle of a busy Friday night because, you know, people are swimming in the marina, which is against the state of Nebraska law, we can't do anything to those guys. At least when they're in our HOA, we have our ability to find, and we have our ability to do those types of things. We would not have that here. We believe this project puts the HOA at an additional burden and risk generated from non-HOA residents. West Shores has had two deaths on the water over the last number of years. Safety is a top priority for us. We've spent a lot of our time, a lot of our efforts focused on safety on the water, around the water. It is something we put a lot of effort into. Enforcement's difficult. It, it's, it's tough. My wife yells at me when we go out into the lake because I'm not sure there's one time we go out for a boat ride that I'm not, you know, flagging somebody down and saying, hey, you're too close over there, hey, don't forget to use your orange flag. Residents kind of avoid my house when they boat because they know if they drive by and do something wrong, and they're all laughing, but you all know it, they, it's like, oh, they're gonna catch me. So, pides our cove down a little bit, but, but as we look at that, though, it, it brings that the enforcement is so difficult. We have had an increase in swimmers in the marina. A lot of times, they're, they're visitors to the commercial complexes there. So the thought that we're gonna bring in 124 residential units and everybody's gonna just be fine, that's not an acceptable thought. We just, we all have to understand that's not gonna happen. Nothing, we're not saying the developer's gonna promote that, but we know it's gonna happen. And if you look at the development, while there is a, a nice barrier with trees and those types of things, if you look at some of the pictures, there's pictures of lounge chairs directly next to the seawall. Once again, that seawall's four foot deep. And if somebody does fall into that, their only recourse is to swim across the marina to a dock, or maybe the boat zone, which is a pretty good-sized marina, or swim out into the lake to get to one of the beaches that they could walk up if they can't scale a four-foot wall. So it does bring a lot of concern to us. We asked the, the developer at that meeting as well if they would be willing to sign an agreement with the HOA, or potentially enter into a deed restriction so that the property would always be limited to no lake access. And the developer declined to do that. So I think that does put us at long-term risk, what happens if that property gets sold down the road, and whoever that new person owns it, Jerry may be concerned about our lake and our community, but what about the next developer? We're very concerned about that. The HOA currently has liability insurance on our lake. I've been in contact with our insurance provider, and they have told me that there is a concern if we would be canceled because of the additional residents in the, in the area of the marina, but felt that at least they would be looking at a rate increase, which is, you know, not cheap. Got an email a little bit right before this meeting from the insurance company, the, the underwriters haven't finished the review yet, but does indicate that it would have an impact. Other HOA topics, our HOA is pretty active. It is a good community, and, and people enjoy living out there. And we have events, we have a bait hunt coming up, we do 4th of July events, we do a car show with big fireworks events. All of this is paid for with HOA funds, which is based off of HOA dues for each one of those residents. The project would not contribute financially to the HOA, but we believe the project would benefit from the HOA and the funds provided by individual homeowners.
Hey, Carl, can I ask you a question with, with regards to that one I'm thinking of? So I know you have several events out there, I know a couple of people that live out there. I know you have several events a year out there. And, and people invite other people, not just people that live in that area, right? So you, you get a fair amount of people that live outside of the lake area to come to these events as well.
Yeah, that is 100% correct. So I will tell you with our events...
They're guests.
What? I'm sorry.
Please, no, no, let's keep it civil here, all right? He's there for representing you, let him speak, please.
We do have events, and we don't have somebody at the gate, you know, checking and, you know, you sign off a piece of paper, says you're there. So I'm sure that, you know, there is occasionally that somebody comes through and grabs a hot dog at 4th of July. It's rare. Most of the people that attend these events are residents, their grandkids, their family, people that have been, you know, grew up at the lake, they come over. It's, it's a residence, it's a neighborhood event. And honestly, I mean, if this project moves forward, I wouldn't, I mean, these, these residents of these apartments would be part of our neighborhood. I mean, granted, there'll be an expense, but I don't foresee us, and I'm just one guy, I don't foresee us all of a sudden having security there, you know, and barcoding everybody and figuring out if they should be in to get a hot dog or not. I mean, it's, we are a community, and we are a community of good people. And, you know, we've never done that in the past, we know people have come through, it's not that big of an issue. But I think when you bring in 124 residential units into the neighborhood, personally, I believe that's just an implied, it's all here, you know, let's, let's go do it. So that, that's our concern. Project brings a lot of fear, we talked about the lake safety, those types of things. I think it's already been talked about, our streets, no sidewalks, you know, no street lights. You know, there's gonna be cars coming in and out. And we're not private streets, we're not gated, there's cars that come in and out anyway. But, you know, certainly the volume's gonna be increased here. One last thing I'd like to share, we had a horrible blizzard not too long ago. And I think this kind of goes towards our rural environment out there. With that blizzard, we have power outages, but there was 100,000 other people in our community that dealt with power outages. But how many of those people, when they dealt with a power outage, were unable to flush their toilets, or take a shower, or give their kids a bath? We, our typical residents can't do that because of our design of our sewage system. Not the developer's fault, but that's what we have there. We unfortunately had a fire during that power outage, and a resident's home burnt to the ground. Fire department responded, hooked up to the hydrants, short amount of water during the fire tower. That's a concern. You know, once again, the frailty of this. We all woke up the next morning, if we didn't hear about the fire, or hear the fire, or see it, to no water in our homes. Then for the next three or four days, we had a boil ban on the water. I mean, that, that's, it's a unique situation, but that's what happens here. And what's the concern and the impact to that infrastructure if we bring in a 40% increase in residential homes? So it is a concern. We just urge you to take the existing residents of that community's position and safety and ability to enjoy their homes and their lives in consideration when you look at this project. Thank you for allowing me to speak. If there's any questions, feel free, I'd be happy to answer them, or else I'll get the next guy up.
Thank you, Carl.
Anything? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other opponents wish to speak?
I have Bob from the SID. Afternoon, thanks for the opportunity to address the board. I'm Bob McGeeck. I live at 309 North 251st Street in Waterloo. My wife and I purchased lot number 186 back in 1999, before there was even a, a lake there, before dredging started. And we moved into our house in 2005. We were told at the time of our lot purchase that there would be a restaurant at the commercial area, possibly some small shops, maybe a boat repair business, and more than likely a, an architect's office, which would be the Yvonne Architects. I'm an SID board member, and I currently serve as a clerk to the SID. SID Board is opposed to granting the conditional use permit to accommodate the building of the apartments. The infrastructure is clearly not in place to accommodate such a development. West Shores Lake community was 273 homes. The proposed zoning to add the apartments would result in additional 124 residences and an increase of 45% in population. Our first infrastructure challenge is sewage, which has been briefly mentioned. West Shores has a lift station that pumps sewage three miles in a forced main to Village of Waterloo Water Wastewater Treatment Plant. Plant's currently at capacity and cannot handle the sewage from this new complex. City Administrator Melissa Smith is here with us today, and she can comment more on this issue. SID currently has an inter-local cooperation agreement with the Village of Waterloo that allows the SID connect to the village's sewer infrastructure for wastewater treatment services. Agreement was executed in 2000 and has a proposed design population for the SID of 1,100 persons and a proposed hydraulic flow of 130,000 gallons per day. Based on the West Shores, paid 95% to increase the water treatment plant back in the year 2000. In addition to the 124 apartments, this will violate our sewer agreement, and will exceed all components of the listed agreement that we were made with Waterloo back in 2000. That means the original West Shores developer obviously did not intend for an apartment complex to go into these commercial lots, or that agreement would have been much, much different. It also means that if the apartment goes forward, the SID will more likely be required to contribute money towards the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. Garrett Johnson, name was mentioned earlier, with Pricard Engineering reviewed our sewer agreement and came to this conclusion. Garrett is present here with us today if you have any questions for him. Our second infrastructure challenge is water. West Shores has had two multi-day power outages over the last year. Our water is supplied by the Village of Waterloo. During the most recent power outage in March, the water pressure went to zero, as Carl mentioned. During that time, the devastating house fire, tragically, the entire house and its contents were burned to the ground. And adequate supply of water was not available at the time. And our water infrastructure is currently struggling and simply cannot serve the addition of a large four-story apartment complex. Third concern the SID Board would like to bring is, the Board is regarding traffic and corresponding safety challenges. The intersection of Highway 275 and West Dodge, a four-way stop, has already experienced significant increase in traffic... a four-way stop, has already experienced significant increase in traffic due to the addition of a view at the West Shores, which can serve in excess of 900 event guests. The main West Shores entrance at 240th Dodge will be expected to handle that same increased traffic plus an additional 124 residences. Clearly, this will compromise the safety of our residents. The community was intentionally planned, was a designated pathway for walking, biking, running, scooters and strollers, an active, family-friendly environment. Besides unresolved parking challenges, the increase in traffic is a serious safety concern. Thank you for the opportunity to present this information and the concerns of the SID board. Any questions?
Yeah, Bob, real quick, you identified several issues related to water there in your testimony.
Water was one, well, sewer's the biggest issue.
Sewer and water, right.
Sewer, water.
So, and that's, that's the responsibility of the Village of Waterloo, right?
That's correct.
That's the inter-local agreement that you have.
That's correct.
What kind of conversations have you had with the city of Waterloo to remedy the situation if it's, because if it exists now, it's going to exist even more in the future as that area continues to grow. So what conversations have you had?
Well, Waterloo can handle our current 1,100, you know, population that was agreed to in the 2000 agreement.
Well, within, within the lake development, but outside of that, they're still responsible for the other areas outside of that lake development as well.
From what I understand, they can handle it, and Melissa Smith can probably speak better to that question.
Okay.
What caused the water pressure? Was it just the fact that the power went out?
Power outage.
Okay.
There's pumps at the Waterloo Water. They didn't have power, so they couldn't pump.
So that wasn't an actual, like, water?
They get their water from MUD, so they can get all the water they want. They buy it from MUD, and then Waterloo turns, sells it back to the homeowners.
Is the water pressure just pumped and didn't have power?
Yes.
No backup power for it?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Great. Any other opponents?
Hi, my name's Melissa Smith. I'm with the Village of Waterloo. My address is 509 South French Street in Waterloo. Sorry, Melissa.
Are you on the board?
I'm the administrator, sorry. As was already been stated, there are, we do have concerns about the sewer capacity and being able to sustain a building of that size. The, I guess, do you have any questions? That's, I don't want to keep reiterating that we have concerns about the sewer, but that's, that's what our biggest concern is.
Wait, you have a, you have a current concern outside of the proposed development, right?
Well, yes, we, yeah.
I mean, the concern is, is there because of, the area's growing, and you only have a limited amount of capacity to handle it, right?
Yes, yeah.
So what are you, what are you planning to do to address it outside of this proposal? To address it, because it's not going to go away. What does the Village of Waterloo's plans to address that issue going forward?
They are looking into the possibility of replacing the sewer plant. But we have just started that process. We don't, it's expensive, and we're small, so we have to see where we're at with pricing and stuff like that.
Have you gotten estimates or a timeline of what something like that would look like? How long that would take?
We started a design-build process. So we've hired a performance criteria developer. We have yet to meet with them. We probably won't be able to meet with them until the end of the month, or into next month, to start discussing the project and the feasibility.
What is the anticipated, again, outside of this project, what is the anticipated growth of the area that the Village of Waterloo is responsible for to provide proper water?
I don't have anticipated growth.
I assume there's, there's plenty of room for growth out there yet, either commercially or residential?
Well, right.
I mean, I'm looking at the map here, and there's, looks like there's plenty of landmass out there to grow into yet.
Yeah, there, we just, we did annex a large area off of Blondo Street, 252nd and Blondo. There's not a ton, there's so much of it in the floodplain, you know, and then there's a large portion that's in the floodway, so it's unbuildable. So there's not, there's some, but it's all farmland, and, you know, they're, they're still using it for farmland. There hasn't been any developers that have come out. We haven't done any studies as to what the, you know, anticipated growth is.
So if, if you did move forward with a, a new facility, or modernize the facility that you, that you have there for capacity issues, who would make that decision? I assume the, the, the board would make that decision for the, for the city, is that correct?
Yeah.
And what would it take to get that going, so, commencing, so that you can address the issues now, rather than wait, be proactive, rather than being reactive, to make sure that you have a capacity going forward?
Well, we, we have to meet with, we've started that design, oops, that design-build process. So we just have to meet with, with the engineer that we've selected to start looking at the project.
Okay. So nothing, nothing firm in place yet, just, just an exploratory?
Yeah.
What, what's going to, what's going to take, what's it going to cost type of project?
Yeah. They don't want to commit to anything, they do, without knowing pricing or anything like that, and funding options.
And if you had to do that, obviously, the, the cost of that would be shared by the residents affected by?
In the rates, yeah, we'd have to.
And future residents.
I was, I don't know if it's going to be a question, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, obviously, but, obviously, these two lots have commercial zoning in Omaha's zoning jurisdiction. A building permit could be submitted tomorrow for several different commercial uses on both of these lots. I mean, you could have several hundred thousand square feet of office building, hotels, restaurants. Waterloo would be in a pretty tough spot, wouldn't they, regarding the sewer and being able to?
Well, it's my understanding that commercials, commercial usually doesn't bring as much, have as big of an impact as?
The fixtures could vary, but, yeah, some uses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if you had a car wash.
Yeah. Hopefully, they'd recycle the water.
Can you address any of the other concerns with the limits of not having a ladder truck? Is that something?
I, I don't have anything to do with the fire department, so I don't feel, I have that.
Okay. I assume it would have to be reviewed?
Yeah. And just like everybody else, we just found out about it. We haven't had time to really look at, into anything in depth to be able to give any solid answers to anything.
Melissa, are, are you looking at expansion possibly just to serve the citizens around Waterloo first and foremost? Is that what brought that up, or was it this project that, that said, hey, this is what we might need? Where did it start?
No, we've just been looking at it. We knew that it was getting close, so we know that we needed to look into our options.
Getting close on this project?
No, 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 just at our wastewater, at our, yeah. So we, we started, we started that process December, January time of, of the design-build, which is new to Nebraska to be able to do, so we're all just kind of working our way through it. And it's a process.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Anything else?
Thank you.
Any other opponents wish to speak?
Hi there. Eric Peel, 643 South 243rd Street, Waterloo, 68069. I'm a real estate developer in town myself, with about $20 million worth of development over the last 10 years. And the problem I see here is, is precedence, you know? If, if you approve this conditional use permit, I'm going to go out to every private neighborhood, private golf course, private lake, and say, hey, you allowed this here with this project, you need to allow me to do it at this project. And that's how I would see it. And I think that that could open up a slippery slope for you guys. And that's how I see it. I'm pro-development on this project, Jerry. I want them to build something. I think they should. But, because I am pro-development, but multifamily, I have kids, they go on the lake, I let them go fishing. I probably wouldn't do that if there was 125 people that I didn't really know or have access to, or who, you know, predators, whatever, you know, safety issue there. But the precedence is what I kind of worry about here, is if you allow this to go through with this, because I live in self-storage, I've had enough conditional use permits denied in my life. I just think you set that precedence. It's kind of scary to, you know, I would leave this and go look for land to buy, and, and show this case, if you approve this, you have, you should approve mine too. And that's kind of how I see it. But I just want to give my two cents, it was something new that wasn't spoke about, so that's all I have.
Thanks, Eric. Okay. Any other points, please?
Hi, my name is Amy Peck. I live at 201 North 251st Street with my husband, John Lorberg. We've been owners since 2004. So I represent a number of us who have been out in this neighborhood for more than 20 years. We bought from the original developer century, and Richard Morgan was the, the agent then, that we all dealt with. So we all have a shared experience, and I'm up here to tell you about it. The other speakers have talked about safety issues. I'm going to talk about something different, and it's trust. Our community only learned about this two weeks ago. If this is such a great project, why weren't they bringing us into it, talking to us about it, and sharing ideas instead of kind of secretly springing this on us? It violates our trust. For 25 years, we have been told that this is a commercial space, that there were going to be small retail stores there. For 25 years, we've seen those plaits that talked about commercial space, and there have been 25 years of promises to our community. I'm also going to talk about this hearing process, which was hidden from our community, really, until two weeks ago. And we've heard that the developer has stated that it's all sewn up and already been green-lighted. I, I know that's not true, but that's what we're hearing about the confidence level. So we've, you know, it's perplexing, because for 25 years, we've looked at written documentation which states that the area by the marina was going to be a small market area, which we could enjoy, a coffee shop, a burger. At one point, there was like, maybe there's going to be a boat repair store, a small office for Frank Creachy's daughter. You know, we heard about all this, and we were excited about it. You know, nobody's saying this needs to be a green space and not developed. We all understood it was going to be developed into a small market area. We were excited about bringing our, you know, kids down to the coffee shop or whatever, riding our bikes. We were also told that this was going to be a development that was going to respect nature. They purposely did not put streetlights in. Why? Because we can see the stars. And a Fort Knox apartment lit up at night is going to ruin that for us. I go out every night, and I look up on a clear night, and I can see the Big Dipper, and it's beautiful. How many people can say that? So for 20 years, we have, we have been told certain things. We have seen the plat that said "commercial development," and we have relied on that.
Amy, can I ask you a question while I'm thinking of that again? Who's telling you all this?
Richard Morgan.
We've been, we've been told, we've been told. Is it the city? Is it somebody else? Who's telling you these things?
They're real estate.
It's in the?
Okay, okay. All right. Because you made another statement too, that said, you heard that this, this process has already been green-lighted. Who told you that?
Yes.
I just, I'm just curious, because?
Jerry.
Nothing's further from the, nobody's making a decision.
Well, I understand. I was not stating that for the truth, but I'm saying this is, this is the confidence. We came into this in shock two weeks ago, where, less than two weeks ago, we're being told about this. And this is a community, when we all saw the plaits, Richard Morgan told my husband and I, because we've been involved in this before in the 90s. We were living in the ridges, and there was a similar dispute, and I've been up talking about this before, but it was in the 90s. We specifically talked to Richard Morgan about those outlots, about those lots. And I asked specifically about apartments, because of what we'd been through before, and he said, Frank Creachy has no intention of apartments going there. This is going to be a market area for the residents, or anyone else. But frankly, it was this idea of, you can ride your bike there, you can, you can, you know, walk there, you can, you can experience a neighborhood and a community. And that's what we've been told, and that's what we've lived through, and that's what the plaits have said for 25 years. So we really, we are really at this point where, why wasn't the developer being open and honest with us? Why was this sprung on this, on us at the last minute? If it was to throw us off balance, you know, it almost worked, because we're, you know, we were scrambling around, even on Sunday, a bunch of us talking, you know, what are we going to say? You know, what's our approach? It's not fair. They've had months to plan. They've had months to talk to you all. We haven't, we haven't had any time at all. And again, if they were so proud of this, why weren't we involved? It's not fair, and we really have a trust issue here. So the developer has said, and just to conclude, to trust them. Trust them that the residents in this high-rise aren't going to use the water, but they won't put anything in writing. Trust us that there's not going to be any problems with safety. Trust us that, that, you know, they're not going to have a, well, this is me paraphrasing, you know, a blow-up paddleboard that's going to go onto the lake, and when they drown, they're not going to sue us. I mean, these are the things that we are very concerned about. So we haven't had, well, this is basically what we are concerned about. We are trusting this process. We are here today telling you what our concerns are. We are appreciative that you are listening to us, and we are appreciative that you understand that what is being done is wrong, and it needs to be stopped, to put integrity back in the process, to put integrity back to our neighborhood that was promised to us all this time. So please send a message to the developer that the tactics of springing this on us eight days ago will not be rewarded, and that good faith and fair play are still valued. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Hi, I'm Jori Thompson.
What's your first name again?
Jori, J-O-R-I. I live at 25005 Farnham Circle in the development. The very first thing I want to point out, and I know this is going to seem nominal right now, at the meeting on Thursday, we were told 124 apartments, 124. Today, it's already 125 or more. So this is typical from my experience. This developer will tell you one thing and then do another one. So I don't trust this at all, and it's very unsettling. The other thing about the fire that we haven't brought up is that it took 45 minutes for the truck, the tanker truck to get there, to dip into the lake, to get the water out. And that was to save the houses on either side. In a, in a neighborhood where the houses are closer to each other, we could have taken out number, any number of houses. And if we don't have access to something better than what we have, it's very concerning to any of us at any time, let alone a tornado, any other. We lose power randomly, without a storm. It may not be days, but I've lost power for hours. And again, can't use my toilet, can't use any of my water. Happened to have my six-year-old nephew with me and try and explain with a little boy, don't flush the toilets. Seems a little odd to him, right? The other thing we talked about is parking. I'd like to show this. This is just one example of recent, this is right outside the development, or the proposed development, where the View would be on the other side. I'm assuming it's for a wedding, or some sort of a party at, at the, at the View venue, thank you. They're parking on our circles. How are we supposed to walk around, have our kids, I raise six kids in this neighborhood, they're older now, they're not little kids on bikes, but we have lots of grandkids and lots of little kids. I don't know what people are doing when they're at the Salta Edge, or when they're at the View. I'm assuming they're enjoying their time there, right? So this is a big concern. We can't have people parking on here. If they're not parking on here, they're going to park on our walking not parking on here, they're going to park on our walking area. This is not safe for any of us. I know you've heard all of this. So I'm in distrust heavily. I've sent an email out this morning about that. I would just like this to all be taken into consideration. Thank you very much for your time and hearing all of us. It's very important to us.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for listening to us. My name is Karoly Mirnics, K-A-R-O-L-Y-M-I-R-N-I-C-S, and 24913 Chicago Street. I live in, on the lake. And I wanted to bring up just a couple of points that sort of escorted over. The first is that we are not against development. We do want development, but it has to be meaningful. And so that's not the issue here. But we believe that the conditions for the approval are not met, one of them being is that it has to benefit the neighborhood. What we are seeing, based on the vote and everything, and, and I was also the election administrator, there is only one person who benefits, the developer. And that's a little bit mind-boggling. Now, the second question that I want to do, talk a little bit about, we had this neighborhood meeting and at this neighborhood meeting, we were really treated like we cannot think with our own heads a little bit. So let me go through some of the statements that were given to us. First, they told that they are building it because of the view. So look at those apartments. Where is that view? What is that lake view that is gorgeous and beautiful here? That's not the case. The second was that the residents will not, the residents of the apartments will not have lake access. On the other hand, this is their own doing. If they don't have access, why do they have boat slips built? So the explanation was that we will be, the other residents of the lake would be coming over to the apartment to visit those people. Does that make sense to you? I'm not an engineer. I'm not a lawyer. I pride myself on common sense. The third thing is, look at the property. There is no pool. So what is the reason really to build? We heard from the developer that this will be 800 square feet to 1,200 square feet units. That will be rented for $3,000 to $5,000 per unit. That's what we were told us. So the question is, you don't have lake access, right? What, you don't have a view, you don't have land, and you will pay that rent. What the concern from my fellow owners is here is that this is the first step. Put ourselves, our foot in the door, build a building, and then we will find a way to give access to the lake somehow. The other thing is, this is the implicit place to launch kayaks, paddleboards and everything else and who will have to basically police it, the HOA. That burden should not be put on us. And with that, I will say that basically, thank you for listening to us. Thank you for respecting us. It's not that we are against. We want a partner and we want trust. And we didn't get a partner and we don't have a trust at this point, based on these facts. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being our audience leader.
Don Hanson, 25030 Farnham Circle, Waterloo, 68069. I wanted to show you the extent of the fire and the safety concerns that we have. As you can see, this was just not a little house fire. Somebody could have died. If somebody would have died, I would venture to say we wouldn't be here today. I'm sure this application would have been pulled. You can see that they have in the illustration, the picture here, that they're fighting the fire with the highest apparatus that they have at the volunteer fire department. That's what we're dealing with is a volunteer fire department. And again, they used all the water to fight this fire. We woke up, as was said, we had no water. Second time that's happened within the last year, the Waterloo has ran out of water. So can you imagine trying to build apartments and having some type of an event? Again, if we had another fire, how would they have fought it with no water? Again, as but said, we are not against development, but we're looking how many years down the road are, is this going to be in a position to have enough sewer, enough water, enough infrastructure? If you do not have the infrastructure, safety is compromised. My grandchildren are compromised. They're the ones that are riding their bikes. Even, you should see all the debris that was from the fire on the streets and so on. It's very, very dangerous. So I would submit to not allow this, stop this development right now, delay it, whatever. We cannot do this. You can say, well, he's going to meet these conditions. It's a conditional use permit. And the point was, we understood that the city had already approved this and was going to approve this. You can see with safety concerns, we as a room say, do not do this at this time. Give it some time to develop the infrastructure so the infrastructure is not stressed. Stressed infrastructure means stressed safety.
Don, I'm going to ask you the same question I asked one of the other
Sure.
people to testify. Terrible to have a fire.
Mm-hmm.
Terrible to have no water.
Right.
I would be mad at the Village of Waterloo for not addressing the issue as well. Have you had any discussions with the Village of Waterloo to try, so this doesn't happen again, absent of this project? You got, you got a, you got a concern that's deeper than that, that exists now, and the issue is with the Village of Waterloo.
That is a great question. A great question. Situation is, we all know where we live. We live in a rural community. We live on the other side of the Elkhorn River. When you come across West Dodge Road and you come across the Elkhorn River, you're coming into God's country. It's a lot different than the city. We are not like the city, like down here in Farnham Street where you expect certain services instantly. We know in a rural environment that we're not going to have the same level of services that you're going to have, that you're going to be necessary for 124 apartments and so on. We understand that. We deal with it. A lot of us have generators. A lot of us don't. We're going to get a generator. But that's the kind of, that's kind of what we're dealing with here. So we expect it. Are we mad at Waterloo? No, it is what it is. We haven't, they have enough capacity for us. Who would have known? And again, when infrastructure is stretched, the power was off, so they couldn't pump the water back into the water tower to give us water pressure. So...
Don, so was there enough water? I've heard a couple of different things. We don't have any water or, or we had, not, not from over here, from, from the audience members, that, that we didn't, we don't have enough water. And then I heard another person, I think it's Carl, said, "We didn't have power" and that the power was the problem. I just need to know.
I understand. They're related. They're related.
I'm asking Don.
Sure. The water pumps, the pumps pump the water into the water tower. The water tower gives the pressure down. There was no electricity. We were out of electricity for three and a half days, four days. So that's what was the problem. But this happened two weeks ago. Two weeks ago tonight, we had this happen. All the water was drained out of the water tower. The pumps weren't working properly to fill the water tower back up. I didn't realize the extent of it. I get up pretty early in the morning, had no water, turned on the faucet, nothing, you know? And this again is the second time. So should I be mad at Waterloo? Yeah, I can be mad at somebody, but the point is, how in the world are they going to have it for a 40, 45% increase?
And I'm not saying be mad. I'm saying, you know, try and correct the, the issue before it gets, before you have another one of these or two of these outside of this project again, because you don't want that to happen, right?
The volunteer fire, let's, let's get down here. The volunteer fire department did an amazing job. Look at that.
I don't doubt that a bit.
They didn't cut, the other houses on each side didn't start a fire. They did a fabulous job, but they needed to pump more water out of the lake.
I don't, I don't doubt that they did a fantastic.
We all learned. We all learned. But to try to have another development here at this point, we love working with Jerry. We love working with him. But it's too many years down the road right now. I understand that you have, you apply for a conditional use permit. Don't you then, you have to have a certain timetable on doing that and it would, it would expire. So it just makes sense to the latest.
And we're going to address that, that issue. We're going to talk about that issue as well, because he's not going to do the development if the
Of course not.
Doesn't have the capacity within the water treatment to handle, just not going to do it.
Of course not.
I'll let him say that, but I wouldn't do it.
Right. No.
Yeah.
It's exactly right.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you very much.
Any other, any other buddies who wants to speak on opposition? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board. My name is Charlie Satzos. I live at 24918 Mason Street in Waterloo, 68069. My wife and I moved there 12 years ago. And I'll tell you just a little bitty story. I used to work up at 200th and Maple. So I'd make the drive every day from my house up to 200th and Maple. I drove by one of the worst intersections I've ever seen. It's at 204th, just north of Dodge Street, Cumberland Road. They're, they're right now tearing it up to try and redo it, but even at that time, I could see that the infrastructure is woefully inadequate if more development came. It's playing out right now in real time. I see the same exact thing here. We just do not have the infrastructure. You've seen some of the, the pictures of where people park. It's bad now. It's going to be a disaster. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Thank you. Mike Ostland, 24359 Douglas Circle in Waterloo. I live on the lake. Moved there five years ago. I know you've heard about all the health and human issues, so I don't want to talk about that, but I want to bring up the one thing I think that we're all overlooking, and that's the beneficial use to the West Shores neighborhood for the development of those lots. We've all said it, we're pro-development. We want to work with developers. I sent you all a letter. My wife is a developer and builds homes and develops. We want to do that, something. But what is the beneficial use of 125 units on a lake that they can't use, that we have to police and we have no say in? And was surprised on us 10 days ago. I really struggle with the word "beneficial use." And I had the pleasure of meeting Frank Creachey years ago before he passed. And I knew that man as a very frugal, great negotiator, and he developed West Shores to be luxury lake-living in a rural setting. And he did it. And when we talked and we met and we discussed things, it was all those outlots were going to be things that supported and helped the community, were beneficial. You heard all the different things, but I think the health and human services issues are a no-brainer. And I don't think anybody would say, "Go do something." I personally hope you don't say, "You can go do this once the water and sewage is treated," because there's still no beneficial use to the neighborhood. Let's work together and find a beneficial use for that property. Thank you.
All right. Any other opponents wish to speak?
I wasn't planning on speaking, but I was just taking some notes as I was sitting back there.
Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, Amy Baltzel, 931 South 249th Street. This is our second home that we've owned out in West Shores. We love the neighborhood that much. We first purchased a lot back in 2009 and built a home, moved into it in 2010. And I can attest at that time that there was no marketing for West Shores as ever being promoted for apartment living. We lived in that home until 2022 and prior to that, we purchased, because we love it so much, a second house in 2020 to remodel, eventually selling the first and moving into the second. As I sat there and calculated on the Douglas County Assessor, we, my husband and I, have paid in the last five years nearly $177,000 in property taxes. I think that's one thing that's being overlooked, is the devaluation to the properties out there with having apartment living being put in place out at West Shores. I can say, from the perspective of a short-term renter, they're not going to be as invested in maintaining their surroundings because they don't own the property. They rent it. We're the owners. We're the ones that have put the money into it to make the neighborhood as great as it is. So that's just something I hope you would consider and I hope that you would deny this request.
Thanks, Amy. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other opponents wish to speak? See, now I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to ask the Jim or developer to come back up and address some of the issues that you, where's Jim? No, there you go. Address some of the issues that you were about, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, board members. Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle. Just want to respond to a few points and then be happy to answer any questions. And I think maybe Larry wants to say a couple of things and maybe have Doug talk about some of the engineering issues that you've heard about. So the green lighting. Jerry, I don't know, there's been some misinterpretation of maybe what the planning department's recommendation report, and maybe that got to the rumor that somehow this has been green, green lighted because there was a recommendation for approval. But Jerry, I can tell you that I, there's no guarantees when you come down to these types of hearings. And I certainly don't, am not presumptive enough to think that we have anybody's vote today. And so I just, Jerry, I, I'm not aware that Jerry had any conversations of that sort. So I just wanted to maybe dispel that, that rumor in that statement because I'm not aware of anything to that, to that effect. The, on the access issue, Jerry is, is going to adopt rules. We have no inherent right to access to the lake. We're not parties to the covenants. We don't have a right of access to that lake today. Unless the homeowners association wants to grant us that right, that piece of property has no lake access rights. And it's not Jerry's intention to either ask for it today or to ask for it in the future and is certainly willing to work with the association to implement rules for enforcement of that. So I just, I want to make that clear because I know that is a big issue to the, to the homeowners association and we'll do, Jerry and his management company will do what they can to take care of that. As far as access, there are multiple accesses to this development. This is the commercial, sort of the, I would call it the primary access when I come in there because the friends that I have, that I visit quite frequently are there and go to the restaurant once in a while, the Salted Edge. So that is the entrance that I use, but I know that there are multiple entrances. So not, it's not like all of the residents are coming into that entrance. So, and there is already existing lighting in that commercial area. There's not in the residential area. And this apartment complex that parking lots will be lighted in accordance with what these, what the city's standards are for that. I would just say that at this point, we're not asking the SID to make any type of financial commitment to any type of solution to the existing infrastructure problems. We do feel it is the obligation, that there is some obligation of the SID because they are charged with managing the public facilities within that development. They're a municipality. They have taxing authority. And so as an owner, Larry Smith, I think, would tell you that there is an expectation that there would be water, water service, sewer service, other utilities available to that site. Just to reiterate, Jerry has no intention of moving forward with this project unless the sewer issue is solved. So he just needs to know that there is a project so that he can keep spending money to investigate those issues, to work out solutions with the SID, to talk to, continue discussions with the homeowners over issues and try and solve problems for the whole, whole development, as well as allow his development to move forward. But without some type of commitment on the zoning issue, he has no incentive or ability to really spend a lot of money to, to try and solve those problems. So I guess we, we would ask that the board consider that today, that we could get approval and move forward to help solve some of these problems so this project can maybe move forward in the future if, if these sewer issues can be solved. I would like to have Doug maybe speak to the, to some of the engineering questions that have been raised.
Before that comes up, just a quick question with regards to one of the other main issues that they brought up. Yes. The notification and, and the timeline of that. Can you, can you tell us why you only decided to notify them 10 days ago about this and why it wasn't sooner than that?
So here's what I can tell you because of my personal involvement in the case. So and what typically happens is there's not usually engagement with the property owners until there's an actual application on file, because there's a process that you go through working with the planning department, with Public Works, to try and define what that plan's going to look like. So until you file that application, it's not... So until you file that application, it's not usual or typical to share what you're doing moving forward because you haven't received some type of commentary and sort of final plans from the planning department. So Jerry and Laura contacted me about two and a half weeks ago. And when I found out that we had this hearing coming up on their project, I said we need to get, and that's why they were calling me, to help work through this public process. And I suggested we needed to start working with the residents as soon as possible and get this meeting set up so that we could have it as far in advance of this public hearing as we could, and then to provide notice. And just to maybe correct what Carl said, well, yes, the residents didn't get the mail notice until probably Monday or Tuesday of last week. The meeting was on Thursday. I did reach out to Carl, and I know that Jerry had some conversations with both the SID and the homeowners association in advance of me even reaching out to Carl. I sent him a copy when we finally found a venue that could serve the number of people we thought. We had a meeting time that could work for Jerry and Laura's schedule and my schedule. I did reach out to Carl, send him a copy of that notice and asked if he could publish that within the electronic communications that the homeowners association had. So that was about a week beforehand. And then Carl also asked me if we would share some of the design plans in advance, and I sent him a copy of the application package, which has sort of the architectural renderings and a description of the project. It's all public record, and so people are entitled to that information. So there was no intent on my part or Jerry's part to hide the ball on this thing. I know he had some discussions with some of the neighbors. A couple of them that have, there's two or three houses that, when you come in that entrance, that actually are very close to this project. And Jerry had some personal discussions with at least one of those homeowners in advance of bringing this to the public's attention, and then had a couple of other discussions with the SID and the homeowners association. So hopefully that answers your questions.
Jim, while you're there, are there any land use restrictions on the covenants filed on these two lots? For just, that would restrict or prohibit any uses?
There are not. There are not. To my knowledge, there are no restrictions, the covenants do not, or there's no independent set of covenants or restrictions other than the homeowners association covenants that restrict or apply to this lot. So all we're dealing here with is a CC zoning. So tomorrow, without coming down to a public forum, they could conceivably apply for a four-story office building permit and move forward with that project. So Carl, watch, there's all the commercial uses. And we wouldn't be having a public discussion about those issues. He obviously needed to comply with the site regulators and all of the other issues he have to deal with with the project. But this is a conditional use, but that, to my knowledge, is the only restriction. That may be Doug, a few, one minds.
Doug Kellner, 10836 Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the African. We haven't done any full engineering studies on any of this. I know engineering science tells us that there's going to be a solution. It'll obviously have to be, decide whether or not there's a, what the cost is, if it's worth it or not. But we have not gone through, until they got this conditional use, to find out, you know, evaluate the actual system. And we can do a lot of design calculations, but we need to look at the actual system in the city of Waterloo, or Village of Waterloo and the lift station at West Shores.
You're referring to the sewer?
Sanitary sewer, correct. Do you have any other questions for me?
Thank you, Doug. Any other, no, I've already closed the public hearing.
I'd like to hear from the property owner, Larry.
Okay. Good afternoon. Larry Smith, Avant Architects, 8340 West Dodge Road, Suite 200. So I'm here today wearing a couple of different hats. So I'm going to just kind of pull some things apart here. So first, just on a kind of a non-technical thing, obviously, everybody probably, I'm related to Frank Crecci, who developed this thing. So it was great to hear one of the people said they bought his lot in 1999. That's actually the first time we started looking at some of this. At one time, we had a model that was eight foot square of this area in our office. And I can tell you it was quite a bit more dense than it is now, which is neither here nor there. But Lori and I spent a number of years excited about the project. This was a big deal to Frank. We probably went to every city in the United States that was on a waterfront, anywhere from Minneapolis to east coast to west coast. And housing's always a component of that, a vital component of that. And so from a planning standpoint, we think that's important here. The other thing I'll just say is I don't know what Frank or a realtor promised anybody. I can just tell you that the only thing I've learned, I always thought I would end up being the next Frank Crecci if I lived around him for 40 years, is he kept his options open, and he was always thinking. And so I think if he saw the quality of development, frankly, we did apartment projects for Frank. It's not a project type that was unfamiliar to him. So I just want to make a couple of comments about a couple of statistics that I want to make sure are straight. One, the first lot, I'm going to call it the West Lot, Lot 1, West Shores, Replat 3. So the number of units that we can have on that site is based on the square footage. We could have 87 units based on the R7 regulator, and we're at 70. On the other lot to the east, we could have 83 units on that lot, and we're at 54. And what we're trying to do is balance a building square footage, a unit square footage, and the parking. You kind of work all that together. So we're already not as dense as we could be. Whether that's still too dense, I don't know. The distance from the lake, Outlet 1, West Shores, Replat 3. You can see Outlet A is a finger that goes down, and it's essentially an easement, a maintenance easement for the seawall. And oddly enough, it has a DR zoning. And so we're required to be 30 feet, and it's 30 feet deep. We're required to be another 30 feet deep. So the closest that building is to the water is 60 feet, not 30 feet. We're showing one entry into the site. We'd love to have more, but Public Works will restrict us to having one point of access. We are required to get an emergency vehicle under that, and we will. And the fire apparatus, they typically don't fight fires from the top of a building. They, we have these in a position where they would approach. They'll be, these buildings will all be sprinkled with a fire sprinkler. In multifamily projects, there are two types. There's what's called an NFPA 13R, and then there's an NFPA 13, which is a way more robust system that's used in office buildings, those kinds of things. These, because of what we're doing with the parking underneath, these will all be the 13R. And so that allows us, they allow us a certain hose length around the building to reach the different sides, and we meet that requirement. Oh, they're going to be 13. I'm sorry, I always, so these will be the commercial 13 system, which is a more robust system. So I saw the fire. I could see it from my house in Elkhorn. When, if there's a fire here, that sprinkler head goes off, and the intent is that it puts out a small fire before it puts out a big fire. We did pull water tests from when we did a view, and I don't know what time of day that test was taken, but it showed more than adequate flows, more than adequate flow and pressure to support the fire sprinkler system in our buildings. We do have sidewalks. The city required that we put sidewalks on our property. So if somebody's in this area, they can walk on the sidewalk without being in the street. We do not have lake access. And the reason that we showed the docks and the water is there, when we purchased the ground, they put in effect a marina use easement. This is recorded. I'm happy to submit it as an exhibit if the board would like. But this tells us we can have boat slips in the water for visitors, essentially from the lake. We don't have anybody with a boat, so nobody's going to be coming there. And so that's why we showed them there. We can take them out, doesn't matter. We don't have anybody with a boat that's going to be using them. And in terms of the view, I think you have to study that more because every elevation, every unit, with the exception of the building on the east, does have an angle that they can get a glimpse of the lake. And you really have to be out there and look at it with the plan and see where it's oriented. You can get up with a drone and see where it's at. We have somewhere in our office a model where we put you on the top floor, and you can look up and down the lake. So we did go to great care to do that. We've tried as best we can on the project on the left to stay away from the house. You can see we wrapped it around, tried to create some green space in the middle. So we've tried to be as sensitive as we can. This is a different zoning than an R1 residential, and it has a different character. And I think as an architect, we think it's appropriate. So I can answer any other questions you like. Thank you very much for your time.
Larry, a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
I think it was Carl, my notes are right, I think, that said that the developer has refused to sign, declined to sign a no-lake access. And maybe you can't answer that, but...
I'm not the developer, but I can tell you as a property owner, the properties have no lake access.
Okay, great. So Jerry, can you answer that question?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Gerald Reimer, 9401 Dodge Street. I am fully prepared to work with Carl. I'm fully prepared to work with Carl as the head of the homeowners association. He had asked me questions related to, you know, how would we enforce, what type of agreements could we come to? I have no problem working out with him, agreements and so forth. I live at the lake, I understand the safety concerns. So I don't, I think that quotes...
Did you have that conversation with Carl that you declined to sign that no-lake access?
We did not have a formal conversation.
Please, please. Please, come on.
So Carl and I are standing on a stage with 200 people, and questions are coming at me, and conversations are interrupted. I did walk out of the meeting when it was all over with Carl and said, hey, we can get together, we can talk about these things. I'm committed to working with you.
And let me think if I, see if I've got any other, while you're up here, real quick.
I have a question for Jeff, our insurance expert. The comment about insurance liability for the HOA that owns the water, is that a thing?
I mean, it is a thing, but you'd have to prove what the negligence of the HOA was if somebody fell in and drowned, that they're going to be sued. I mean, everybody's going to sue everybody, I think, when there's a tragedy of some such. But when you're, where's the negligence on the HOA for somebody falling in? And so I don't think that that would probably merit any, I'm not an attorney, but I don't think that would merit any claim, or be a claim, but not pay out.
Probably getting too much in the weeds, but I'm just, you know.
Okay. All right, we're going to keep this, keep this going, and I'm about to close it. So do you have any final comments from you?
I don't, no. But thank you for your consideration, and like I said, Jerry will continue to work with the neighbors. I just like the opportunity to try and move this project forward and try and work out whatever issues they can so they can actually build this project. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Eric, do you have any other questions you'd like to ask of anybody? All right. So I'll turn it over to you then, Eric.
Okay. So obviously a lot there. Try to keep my comments brief. You know, I kept asking certain questions about covenants and deed restrictions, zoning, because the fact of the matter, this is zone commercial. And it was zone commercial under the original plat when Douglas County did the original West Shores plat. So, you know, it's difficult, and it would have been nice if there, you know, would have been some use restrictions if that was always the intention. I know what was, you know, I know how real estate agents are, and that's not the first time we hear it. And so, you know, I understand, I'm sympathetic, you know. But the fact of the matter, when this site became part of Omaha's zoning jurisdiction, you know, we keep that commercial zoning in place because there are certain property rights that property owners have. The, there was, not in any particular order, but there were at least comments about no sidewalks and things like that. The SID has the ability to pursue sidewalks, just as if any other development, if it was coming in for a new development, or, you know, if it's ongoing. I mean, there are avenues, you know, in city, in Douglas County, can help with that process if the neighborhood as a whole wanted to put in, you know, sidewalks, for example. But of course, this new development, as Larry had mentioned, would have those required, you know, improvements in city standards that are applicable to the city of Omaha. The, you know, it's a unique situation when you have the Village of Waterloo that's providing the sewer service. That's, I don't recall, another development that's been in our jurisdiction that the situation has come up. So it is unique, I do acknowledge that. But from, you know, the city's perspective, it's a fairly straightforward recommendation report because it follows our rules and regulations that are in place with platted lots and commercial zoning. There's no waivers that are being requested. It meets all the applicable zoning regulations. So, you know, from the city's perspective, it's fairly straightforward with the recommendation for approval, with just one little clarification on one of the landscaping to make sure it provides the adequate parking lot screening. So, excuse, hey, 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 please, let's stop, okay? This isn't a mystery. The recommendation report has been out for a week, okay? So it's not like the city's...
You're not doing yourselves any favors, folks. Please. No.
Okay, all right. I'm going to say one thing, because please be respectful. Eric is giving a city's opinion. I'm not lying. I'm going to say a few things, and then I'm going to let Eric continue. It's my opinion, I've been in a lot of other public meetings, and the disturbance, the clapping, the comments are usually not tolerated. And if it happens again, there's a gentleman right back there that I'm going to call on because you have to respect the public process. So please, let Eric finish. That's all I'm asking, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. So as I was saying, I mean, the city's recommendation report is pretty straightforward. We can get into any of the regulations you want. I, I don't know. I don't know if there's any other items or issues that you would like me to answer that...
Give them a little bit of background on that so that this isn't like that we've green-lighted the whole thing. We're allowing someone to...
Sure. Yeah, so within any zoning district, there are permitted uses. There are uses that are allowed with conditional use permits, and then there's uses that are allowed by special use permits. And then, of course, there are other uses that are not allowed within that zoning district. So within the CC district, there are probably 50 or 60 uses that fit into one of those three categories as permitted or conditional use permit or a special use permit. If you have a platted lot, which these two lots are platted, dating back about 25 years, and you have the zoning in place, you could apply for building permits for permitted uses. Obviously, this is a use that falls under the conditional use permit process, which means it comes to this board, who ultimately does have the final authority. Special use permits are required to come to Planning Board, receive a recommendation from this board, and then go on to City Council for the final vote. That is not the case here. The city is making a recommendation based on our regulations and policies, and this board then is ultimately voting yes, no, layover, however that may be, but with a conditional use permit, this board is the ultimate authority.
And the conditional use permit expires after two years? Nope, nothing is done?
Yeah, so I can read it verbatim, and this came up in the pre-meeting. So a conditional use permit, in section 55883 of the zoning code, under lapse of approval, a conditional use permit shall become void two years after the date on which the permit becomes effective unless the applicant receives a building permit... becomes effective unless the applicant receives a building permit and diligently carries out construction or commences the conditional use before expiration of that period. So, if the board were to approve this today and nothing happened on the site for two years or longer, that conditional use permit is no longer valid. Now, they could, the applicant or anyone else could always bring back a new application to get an extension or just seek a new conditional use permit, but yes, that provision is in place. I will read the recommendation report of the city, you can definitely continue to have dialogue or ask questions as you see fit. So, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential in the CC district subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, they have a recommendation, do I have a motion?
I will say that my biggest concern about, I mean, there are a lot of things said here. From the very beginning, my biggest concern has just been the lack of communication and notification to the neighbors. I think we've set a precedent as a board, and we've held this over on a lot of developers over the years that I've been on this board, that no one has the right to tell somebody what to do with land that they own. But we also think that we've held true that neighborhood involvement and good communication is very important. A lot of other things were said, but because of that, I'm going to recommend a layover.
Is it a motion?
Yep.
Do you have a motion of layover?
I would second that motion.
One second, just for clarification. Is there a specific timeframe? Because we have so many in the crowd, I want to make sure that we are covered in what the expectation, what the notification process is. If it is laid over one month and it is on the May, whatever the May date, first Wednesday in May, we will not re-notify property owners within 300 feet. But if it is longer than that, we would re-notify. So, I just want to clarify, you don't have to put a date, I just...
I mean, I think I want just another neighborhood meeting before we come back here to work out a lot of the issues that were talked about.
Okay.
Okay, I think we have a motion and a second, right? So, does someone second it? Okay, so now we can have discussion technically with this. I don't favor layover because I don't know that that's going to do anybody any good, right? I just don't think it will. The other thing is, it's zoned commercial. It could be a four-story office building next week if they come in, right, and wanted to do that, without anybody having the opportunity to say no to it. So, it is zoned, a conditional use permit, and the developer's not going to do anything without the sewage issue being corrected, just not going to do it. I don't think he would do it anyway. And I just think there's too many obstacles for him to continue to do it without, you know, that happen. So, I don't know that a layover is going to do any good, to be honest with you, because we'll be here next month and we'll have the same testimony, that's my opinion on it. But if that's the wishes of the board, we'll find out in a vote.
For me, it's a matter of communication and an ability to maybe repair where, because I do think that both sides have a lot of points that could be potentially reconciled. And I also, I think, one point that I think is important is the HOA's responsibility to quote-unquote "police" the lake. I do think that, I haven't quite heard a solution from the development team as to how to control that, and I do think it's quite a large burden if apartment residents were to suddenly, I don't think this would happen, but suddenly flood the lake with a bunch of different uses. I do think it's, you know, there's no, there's no police force out there, there's no, there's no like DNR, whatever they call it. So, I would like that issue talked about specifically in a neighborhood meeting as well, and I do think that would go a long way in assuaging some concerns, and that might even include design changes and things like that. That can all be discussed in a meeting. Again, like Pat said, we hold people to a certain standard. I think we should continue that, and I think that's what the value would be in a layover. I agree, I don't think it's going to solve everything. I think it's about communication and trust at the end of the day, and I do think everybody's capable of that in this situation.
Yeah, and I totally agree with the need for constant communication, even through the development process and building process as well as it goes along.
I want people to understand also that, as this vote goes for a layover, that this is zoned commercial. I mean, anybody can come in and do something on this, and it doesn't have to be approved by the neighbors. And I've honestly listened to everybody here today, and there's things I've agreed with and things I've disagreed with. This was never green-lighted, I hate to hear that. We got money on the side, there's none of that. But I want you to understand, too, that this is a project, it's a commercial project, it's zoned commercial, and it may not go the way that you want at some point. It's just, it was zoned that way from the very beginning. So, now, if this gets laid over, work with the developer and try to figure out a way to make it better, and if the sewage thing doesn't get solved, it's not going to be there anyway, and it'll probably never have anything there. So, just be patient with the process on it, okay? I mean, we understand where you're coming from, but not everything that gets approved is approved by the neighbors.
And along that same, the CC zoning, I mean, it's not unusual for us to approve conditional use permits for multifamily houses, housing in CC. We do it all the time. My position is just the lack of notice and the lack of communication. But in my six years on the board, I've never regretted laying something over. There are certain things that I've voted for that I certainly wish that I wouldn't have.
I think another thing that has to be said is that because of the CC zoning, and many of you have demonstrated what you were told by whomever way back when you sold it, the principal question that has to be asked regarding that is the question that Eric asked, and there are no notes in that property that dictate anything other than the zoning that is allowed, period. So, whatever some, this happens all the time, people get sold things and people tell them things that really aren't there. I can't deal with that. All we can deal with is the facts, 20-plus years later, and there's no restrictions on that property, other than the CC zoning and the process that we would go through to make any modifications to it. So, that's where we are. And just from the perspective of, like what Jeff said, we could have a big, tall building there. If somebody wanted to build a tall building out there, they could do that, as long as it fits within the code of the CC zoning. And you'd have zero opportunity to comment about it. That's just the way it would be. No, sir. And then, what I'll tell you is that the most desirable transition from single-family residential to commercial of any kind is multifamily. That's the best. It's the best way to shield one from the other. And here you have that opportunity, which is better than somebody putting some sort of a large commercial project on that site. I have very severe concerns, even if it were voted today, whether I would vote for it, but not for any of those concerns. My concerns are the infrastructure deficiencies that exist today, and those things are done through public entities, they don't happen overnight. They're very serious, they have to be dealt with, and I'm sure everybody's identified that, and they're working on it. So, do we put a developer in a position where he's sitting there waiting on that future? Now, I know in their turn, their perspective, their process takes time as well, and they'd like to know what direction they're going, because they're going to have to spend a lot of money on that path, too. So, I think this is a dilemma, it's a difficult situation, and if only one of these issues were necessary to be dealt with, I'd probably say, well, let's just make that a condition of the approval. But in this situation, we've got a lot of them. And in my regard, I will probably go along with the layover just purely from a communication standpoint, because it's vital that you all can communicate. I think you did have an opportunity, you had 200 and some people at the meeting, you obviously were able to communicate, but maybe on a short basis, you need more time, I don't know. So, I'm willing to do that as well, if that's the direction we go.
Okay, anything else? Not, I'll call for the vote. Kathy, please.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Soto Longo? Moore? Rupert? Morris? Mr. Chair?
No.
Approved, five to one.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, appreciate it very much.
Layover. Layover was approved.
Okay, we have two more items on the agenda to get through, so if we could...
Move out of here.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to, we've got two more items on the agenda that we're going to get through, so...
Yep, please take it outside, we have more cases.
Jim? Mr. Buser?
Jim.
We've got two more items on the agenda. All right, where are we here? All right, we've got item number 33, case number C721090. Applicant is Luther Memorial Evangelical Lutheran Church. Request is approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R3 district. Location is 1031 Sunset Trail. May we hear from the applicant?
Yes. Hi, I'm Pastor...
Stand until 4:30.
Yeah, well, I would like to give you all a big blessing and ask you to take a deep breath. This should be a much easier thing to talk about. I'm Amy Truie, I live at 6110 Birch, which is right next to the church at 1031 Sunset Trail. I am bringing a picture, we got our letter yesterday morning, so we did talk to our sign people about redoing what, because we knew that we were asking for variances on height, we did not think we were too close to the street, although that's one of the things you put in your letter to us, and the electronic message center in the residential area. We had already talked about we would turn it off at night, we don't want in any way to upset our neighbors. They've worked really well with us on our tower project, and we want to keep that relationship healthy. So, I don't know what all you want to see, but I did bring the former sign that we had. That's the... But that's the sign that was there previously, and the slab we wanted to use that you guys think is a foot and a half from the property line. I worked yesterday really hard to get a metal detector so I could find the little thingies in the ground and make a line for you, but I could not find a metal detector, and I dug around and couldn't find the thing. So, and I've never found one of those things, so maybe I overlooked it. There's a lot of nodules in the grass. But, so, what we would just like to do, this sign was there for about 30 years, and it was run over by a car three years ago, and when I came last June, I said we need a sign, so we're trying to get that done. I don't know how to answer questions, other than our person who's doing the sign did remake it so that we wouldn't have to use the slab, we would just be a little bit back. But when I measured from the sidewalk to the front of the slab, it's 19 feet. And so, I know that that's, we do know that the property line goes inside the sidewalk, we just can't tell how far, that's the issue. And so, I tried to go from the telephone pole and see if you do that, the pole there that you can see on the east, it looks like it's about 13 feet, and the sign itself is another like six feet behind that. But if you go to the one on the west side, it looks like it's a lot closer. So, it's kind of a wonky line. It's a line that's not square to the street, is what I think. So, if you want to see the, I mean, I can show you the other proposal that she came up with yesterday, I got this last night, so if that's helpful to you, we just want to sign. We did have several neighbors call, because you guys sent letters, apparently, thank you for doing that, because we were going to go talk to them. But, and people, two people called yesterday and said, hey, we think it's a good idea, it's about time you had to sign again, so...
Amy, did you use the word "tried to find thingies in the ground"?
The little, the little property line, dilly-mo-wop, so I don't know what they're called.
You got too technical on me, I didn't know what it was.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. I'm just an old mom, I don't, you know, but it's, yeah. So, the stakes, or is that what they're called? Okay, I don't know what they're called, pins, things in the ground that you don't run over at the moment.
We know what you're talking about, so...
Yeah, I know you do. Yeah.
So, are you comfortable with the recommendation report from the city about shortening the height of the sign to six feet?
Yeah, so that's what she did on this new thing.
Okay, that's okay, you don't need to show it right now.
Yes.
You're on the zoning board of appeals next week.
Okay.
I believe.
I don't know, we haven't got that one.
Yes, yes.
I didn't know what all, I knew we had things that we had to do in order, but...
So, I guess, yeah, I just, so as long as you're aware, the city's recommending to lower the height of the sign to six feet, which is customary and very common of what we've done with other signs for the civic uses such as this, and then the setback of 12 feet, you probably need to have a surveyor out before you get a building permit to make sure you're in compliance with that.
The survey we show, we have, from when they did our tower project, is just too tight in the, it's not far enough, like, the picture's not big enough that you can tell how far it is, but we are 99.9% sure we're far enough back.
Okay, okay. And then, the other criteria about the performance standard, so...
Yeah, we're perfectly fine with the lights and all that, we don't want to bug anybody.
All right, thanks.
So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any other proponents wish to speak? Any opponents?
We like that.
Okay, that's good. It's a public meeting.
Thank you. If you need anything else, just, you know, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Eric?
Yeah.
We're coming up with that.
We are making a, well, this board is going to vote on the recommendation from the city, and then you would also need to get the waivers from zoning board of appeals, but if this board supports it, that usually would happen. So, the city is recommending approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R3 district subject to the eight conditions in the report.
Okay, thank you, Eric. I have a motion.
Motion to approve the major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R3 district subject to the following eight conditions in the report.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Kathy, record the vote, please.
Soto Longo? Moore? Rupert? Morris? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate what you do, I was worried about your vote, you're
always a no.
Sorry I had to stick around.
No, no, it was interesting.
Yeah, good. Come next time. We like an audience. All right, next item's 34, case number C725072. Applicant is Ponca Hills Volunteer Fire Department. Request is approval of a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit pursuant to section 55883Q to allow safety services in the DR district. Property is located within an ED environmental overlay district. Location is 12919 Ponca Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Scott Bowen, 13888 North River Drive.
Joel Sax, President of Ponca Fire Department, 12919 Ponca Road.
Okay.
So, thanks for hearing us, it's been a long day for you, I'll try to keep it short. We, the Ponca Hills Fire Department Incorporated is a fundraising part of our fire department, the department is owned by the suburban fire district. We do the fundraising and respond to all the calls. There's also another entity involved with us, it's the Ponca Hills Yellow Ribbon Suicide Prevention Program that does fundraising. So, the purpose of our sign that we have in front of our station, this is the current sign, is to provide public safety messages, you know, fire prevention, home safety messages like that. When there are burn bans, red flag warnings, we put those messages up. We promote our Yellow Ribbon Suicide Prevention with messages, and when we have fundraising activities, we put them on the sign also. The current sign is manual replacement of letters, so you can only have one message at a time. That's why we're trying to go with a new sign. This is the sign that's in place. The current sign is seven foot tall. All we're asking is to put a digital sign in on the same footprint as this sign. We don't want to make it any bigger, we just want to put a digital sign in on the same foundation. Thank you.
I think one of the recommendations, if I'm not mistaken, is, I'm reading this, comply and comply with revised sign elevation for a six-foot-tall sign. Are you okay with that?
To go with a six-foot-tall sign, that would, we'd have to cut the brick down on that monument if we did that. We're asking for a waiver to stay within... We're asking for a waiver to stay within the footprint of the sign we have now, because that sign is already seven foot tall.
So I can make a quick comment. So the sign now has a pedestal base, and then the actual sign is mounted on top. So the bid that we have from American Lift and the intent is to utilize the existing infrastructure and just change the sign. So if we had to adjust the, the size of the sign, that would not allow us to use the existing infrastructure, so that would create a hardship. And as Assistant Chief Sax mentioned, this sign is not, we're not selling hamburgers, this is meant for public safety notices, so we're concerned with reducing the, the square footage of the sign for safety messages, a burn ban or evacuation or something like that. So the intent is to keep it the same size, which is seven foot on the low side, the, the property slopes, so it's about six and a half on the high side, and it's, the elevation itself is down a, a good foot from the road, so the actual height from the road is, is well under the six-foot mark.
Any other comments?
No.
Any other proponents on this?
I've got, I can, just for evidence, this was included in the packet.
You can give it to Eric. Okay. No other proponents, are there any opponents which speak? Please, your name and address for the record, please.
Louis, 2709 Dewey Avenue. And I'm not proponent necessarily, but you know what, Mr., this guy over there.
Moore? What's your question?
I, I oppose the comments that were presented in this meeting.
Okay. All right, Louis, we're here to talk about this case. Okay.
Not this case?
Not the other one.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, any other opponents? See, now to close the public hearing? Eric?
I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot, I didn't write down your name. Scott, Scott, could you, come up, please. Could you tell, tell me again, what did you say about the height on one side and the height on the other? And name and address.
Sure, so it's on a slope.
Name and address again, please.
What's that?
Name and address again.
Sure. So Scott Bowen, I'm at the Ponca Hills Fire Department as an officer, and I live at 13888 North River Drive.
Thank you.
So it's a bit ambiguous, it's, it's a dirt gravel lot, but it's on a slope. So on the, at the very highest point, the sign is seven feet. On the top side, it's, it's about six and a half, depending on how the gravel is raked. And then the sign itself sits well below the, the level, the grade of the sign is well below the road. So from the level of the road, if that's a consideration, it's below that six feet. And again, the, the goal is just to have something that is visible to our, our neighborhood, we've got people that don't have cell phones or internet, believe it or not. And so just having something that is not objectionable, but is, is visible to, to the folks if we're needing to convey information.
Okay, and then you, you saw what the city's recommending for the performance standards as far as not having video and, and brightness and things like that.
Yeah, and again, like I said, we're not selling hamburgers, and I don't know how we would create a video to put on there in the first place.
Well, you'd be amazed what these signs can do, so.
It's, yeah, we're fine with all the recommendations, those were our intents, is, the picture we showed, the sign now is quite bright, and so we would like to, like to have the option to, to dim that, so we.
Yeah, it is pretty bright, so that would be better with the new performance standards. Okay, thank you.
You want to talk about six, the six feet?
Well, so obviously, yeah, sure. The, the city, we've, we've had a lot of these sign requests, and we've been fairly consistent with the six feet in height. We are not yet done reviewing our sign code, but it is under strong consideration about taking grade at the street into a factor. So the city will keep our recommendation as stated, but the board can do with that what they see fit. So staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit to allow safety services, subject to the five conditions in the recommendation report. So this will need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I believe that's on next week, I'm looking. Yeah, thanks.
A motion and to allow them to have the sign that they're requesting, how would that have to read? Would we have to pull out number three, or would we have to write something different, or?
You would just need to strike condition number three.
Should we say, if we strike it, should we also say that, and the applicant will use the existing sign pedestal, just to make sure that they can't like, tear it down and build some?
Well, okay, wait, I'm going to backtrack here now, because number one is specific for the ZBA for the electronic only. So it would also need to include a waiver of the height, because six feet would be code compliant, so you would have to strike three and then modify number one. Sorry, Patrick, you were, and you were talking about specifying keeping the base.
So modify number one to, to read how?
Rule is changed, I don't want to put us in that position.
Yeah, when's the sign rule changing?
We don't even know if it's going to happen. Not anytime soon. Bethany Lutheran, Mike? Was that existing base? There are few examples keeping the base that was factored into the height that was approved.
Okay.
So.
I've already closed the public hearing, sorry.
I don't think you, I don't think you even need to get to that level, because the other conditions are, are kind of referencing the submitted site plan.
Just strike three.
Well, you'd also have to modify one, though.
How do we need to modify one?
You could say approval of all applicable waivers from the Zoning Board of Appeals. No, Jen? Oh, okay, you look like you were like, no, don't do that.
She's like, whatever.
So, yes.
You're okay with that?
If you're asking if, how to make that motion, you would strike number three and then modify number one to say approval of all applicable waivers from the ZBA. Would cover the taller sign as the applicant submitted.
Right, Mike, Dave, you good?
As long as we know what those waivers are, so.
Yeah.
Maybe, but we don't.
Well, it's, it was the height, right now it's just the electronic.
Then why would we, why would we be more specific and say the height?
And you could do that.
And they're on the ZBA, you keep looking over your shoulder to Mike, this one, that one able to be on because you haven't advertised, so.
No, we're advertising as requested for the height and the electronic. We would have, if the board would have went as the report says, we would have recommended for the ZBA approval of the electronic denial of the height.
Okay.
We're still sort of putting the reports together for ZBA.
Okay.
So applicable waiver as it relates to the height of the existing electronic, and electronic of the exist, of the sign, yeah, specifically. Okay?
So one was approved of all applicable waivers from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
For one, instead of what's there now, specifically related to the size, height, well, then we're not saying all, all, never not waivers.
All right, let me give it to, let me go at this again, it's, it's long, right? I'm trying. You could recommend, so you still need to strike condition number three, but for number one, you could say approval of a waiver from the Zoning Board of Appeals to allow for an electronic information sign and seven feet in height in the DR District. You would just say, and seven feet in height after information sign. Did you do it?
They'll come out and measure, you know.
Okay.
You got it?
I mean, I'll try it, I'm not going to do it right. Motion to approve the major amendment to a presumed conditional use permit pursuant to Section 55883Q to allow safety services in the DR District. Property is located within an ED Environmental Overlay District, subject to the following conditions. We're going to, I'm going to modify the conditions as follows, strike condition three, and condition one should read approval of a waiver from the Zoning Board of Appeals to allow for an electronic information sign and the height of seven feet in the DR District.
Second. That works. Motion second. Second, okay. I have a motion in a second, Kathy.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Do you, did you say and all the other conditions in the report? Because you, because you just made a motion to change, strike.
I was getting there.
That's what I thought, I was just, I was just.
I wasn't done, you guys were just rushing me.
I gave it only on the second, sorry.
I'm really taking my time. In addition to the modifications, I would just like to state for the record that all other conditions in the report also apply before sending a suit. Before.
Two, four, and five.
All right, two, four, and five also apply.
Thank you. Boom. You got that, Kathy? All right, please record the vote.
Sotolongo? Moore? Rupert? Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. Need a motion now to approve the minutes from the March pre-meeting and regular meeting.
I approve the minutes from the March pre-meeting and regular meeting.
Make the motion.
Or motion, sorry.
Motion second. Kathy, record the vote, please.
Rupert? Morris?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Motion to adjourn?
Get out of here.
Morris?
Yes.
Rose Sacker? Oops. Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore? Rupert? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. Thanks.